Yeah, I guess what I wondered.
Another opportunity if we run into some issues that we want some additional information and so forth on it. Just one thing I'd kind of like to start out with. I came across a deal on Facebook concerning Leeds Main Street. Since we've got a project coming that'll redo our Main Street that's being done and designed by South Dakota DOT, here's what they left Leeds with. A railing on one side of their street. And one of the individuals that I know there wrote this comment on Facebook about that railing. Could this be why the business community in Leeds struggles to make it? There is a reason the north side of Main Street is full of vacant storefronts. Many come here like we did, thinking we could help Leeds, only to find they did not want our help. I guess that's one of the things that as we look through the budget that we as leaders need to think about, not only how we're going to make it through this next year, but what Hot Springs is going to look like two, three, four, five, 10 years from now. And I think that's very, 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 very important aspect. So I just thought I'd share that. The divided business district with railing, keep it what? Yeah, you sure can. And that was a South Dakota DOT design that was accepted by the city of Leeds. So we will find hard to what?
Did they put that up for a safety reason? Did they give a reason why they did?
It's for a safety reason, and apparently they're having problems with people jumping over the fence. The police department has been tasked to arrest those that jump over it for jaywalking. And the pizza delivery guy has been arrested because he loads his truck out there.
Yeah, I walked down that street and you literally have to get on the Main Street sidewalk, you have to go to one end or the other. And then walk the full length of it. You can't just go.
Enter it.
Enter in front of the store that you want. You have to go in front and do the other.
So there is no breaks in between one end of the block to the other?
No, because I was like, I gotta walk down there so that I can walk up there.
Because on us, according to DOT regulations, apparently they can't have mid-block crosswalks.
Is there parking on that side of the street?
No, there's no parking on that side of the street. So it's, and that's why we're working hard. And I do have an appointment to go meet with our congressional delegation this next Friday, not this Friday, but the following Friday. See, there could be ways that we can fund and keep our downtown vibrant and growing as opposed to having something like that.
Well, the city's gonna be just as much as small as the state if they okay to do it.
Oh, absolutely. You're exactly right.
Doesn't make sense to me.
So that was one of the individuals, you know, big concern that wrote the thing on Facebook that, you know, the city also does not be in business friendly. So that's, that's the thing. With that little vignette, Misty, can you go ahead and get us started with what we're here for?
Sure. You asked me at the end of the meeting yesterday to get a few different things for you. First, we were to get the Chamber financials. I received those and sent them out by email to all the council members the next day. Olivia is here from the Chamber if we wanted to discuss that. We did get through revenue and expenses in those funds, but after reviewing those, if you had any specific questions for Olivia regarding the Chamber's financials, it'd probably be nice to start with that first and wrap that up. You also asked me to get some information about the need, to justify the need for the water truck. And once we get done with the Chamber financials, we can talk about those and then we can jump into the rest of our budget expense talk. Did everyone get a chance to take a look at the preliminary budget for the Chamber and their financials? And does anybody have any questions for Olivia while she's here?
I guess the thing that stuck out to me is I saw a couple of minus signs there. The Chamber is actually spending the money that we're giving to promote our community and our town. One of the big things is the balloon festival that's coming up, brings a lot of people in as a relatively new event. Event actually won an award from Black Hills Badlands as a, as a new event that draws people not only to Hot Springs but to the area. So I appreciate that, that work by the Chamber and you, Olivia.
Thank you, Matt Cuddy. And just a quick thing on the minuses, we've never overdrawn the account. What happens is we do sometimes have sizable amounts of tourism funds where we'll take out a $5,000 ad. I will call for the checks, but will not distribute them until the funds are in the bank. So although you do see, I think on these financials, minus 300 something, the bank balance at the time wasn't in areas we don't hit overdraft fees. It's just easier for me to have the checks ready that when our funding comes in, I can send them out. I don't have to hold up another few days. If in the event we are going to pay a check late, I pick up a telephone, I call our person and say, hey, we'll be sending something in, so we don't just ignore debts. And most times when we do a deal for tourism, ad placement, I inform folks that I am city-funded and we do run, you know, sometimes I will ask for an extension. Rich from Traveler, we've spent $3,000 on their marketing in their magazine. He knows he's not going to see money till August. So that's where those minuses come from. And then on the balloon festival, this year we're running a budget of $20,700. And most of that comes in through sponsorships because we're trying to keep everything free at the event so that people are not spending admission money. They can spend it on eating and lodging and even the kid, the thing in the park, the big inflatables where everybody comes for free. It's run by sponsorship again with the idea being heads in beds and foods in bellies and people having money to spend in the downtown. So that's how the balloon festival works.
And Olivia, I know in the past, South Dakota Tourism does a very extensive study on the economic impact of tourism. I know a couple of years ago that was calculated at approximately $220 per person that every visitor to the state spends per day in the communities that they, they visit, which is a pretty significant economic impact.
And in fact, if anybody wants to look at those statistics, you can just go to sdvisit.com and then on the side, there's three little lines. You click that and it's research and reports and they keep all of that info there. I wish I'd have memorized the figures, but there is one that sticks out. It's that without tourism, the average household would be taxed an extra $800 and something dollars to make up the deficit. So if anybody wants to see the actual figures, you can also call me and I'll just email you a link. But they've got a lot of interesting statistics compiled by South Dakota Tourism.
So the people that live in Pukwana actually benefit from, from the people that spend money here in Hot Springs and Custer and Hill City.
Absolutely.
Were there any other questions on the financials?
Not on the financials themselves, but I've been asked a number of times, Olivia, when it comes to economic development.
Yes.
Why we need Shedco and why the Chamber is looking at economic development. My response to that, Chamber's more promotional than it is economic development. That's my answer.
Actually, when I first joined the Chamber in 2012 as the executive secretary, they had just split economic development out of the Chamber. And I started in September of 2012, so forgive me, I really didn't know what was going on. But it was around that time where the lady training me, Georgia, she had shown me all the committees and in there was the Economic Development Committee. And so I was asking about that and Scott told me, no. And but they honestly don't know who they are, but they had split economic development into its own thing under the heading of Shedco, which, you know, later on I found out what that was. So to be perfectly honest, I really don't have a good answer other than a lot of our main focus is local economy and tourism and marketing and promoting Hot Springs. Shedco and our Andrea, we do talk a lot. Just in my little article for this month, did a little article on the bongars, how it came about and some of the history that she gave me. But I don't know who it was who decided to split economic development away from the Chamber.
Do you have an opinion on that? Was that a good decision? Did that make what you need to focus on?
I do believe we have to support each other, but I think economic development is a specialized entity as is tourism. For a personal preference, I prefer that they are separate, but if I were called upon to join forces or help whatever's going to help Hot Springs, tell me to do that, we're fine with it. But my expertise don't lie in economic development, they lie more in tourism.
And Bob, I think the, the past discussion that probably led to that and why many communities go that way, there's a concern of existing businesses in a town that the Chamber supports and tries to continue to grow and recruiting competition into town essentially. So some feel there's a conflict of interest between the two functions and that that's one of the reasons that they separate. Again, I wasn't even involved in the particulars here in Hot Springs, but that, that I know is a discussion that is ongoing in many communities.
I wanted to have just more than my opinion of why it had happened or whether it's working or not.
Yeah.
So because Olivia's here, we'll take the opportunity to ask.
Yeah, no, I.
What she knew about it.
And also one thing Andrea did tell me, just in conversation of why it's hit Southern Hills, and apparently in terms of writing grants and things, population factors in. So if you're just using the population of Hot Springs, I guess you lose out on something. Whereas if you're using the Fall River County and a broader spectrum, apparently there's more to gain by doing that. So Andrea could answer more, but that's the understanding of why it was Southern Hills not Hot Springs per se.
I remember quite a few years ago when Obleton was mayor, they had economic development like around Deadwood and Rapid and stuff, and they asked Hot Springs and Edgemont and all those fizz interests to join in. And Hot Springs spent quite a chunk of money the first year and they never ever helped anything down here, so then they quit doing it.
That was Black Hills vision.
Was that? I don't remember what it was.
I think it was. It was Black Hills. We got in hot and heavy right through mid-go and really saw no, we didn't even feel we got a decent 10% out of our first year's investment in any type of support.
Olivia, the only question I have in reviewing is, am I right in the assumption that the CDs are scholarships?
Some of them are, the very large one of $22,000, it continues to roll over because that was a believable quest from somebody for ag. And at the time, the ag scholarship would have come out of the interest. But with interest rates being a bit of a non-event, it just stays there and we cover it through the various different fundraising at the Ag Bank, but folks donate towards the scholarship. But we don't touch the CDs. I do have the paperwork for it, but the history, I'd have to do some serious digging through files.
Okay.
But yes, the very large one, it's not operating money. No, we don't touch it. And to be honest, the interest is at least.
Things getting better. Maybe a little bit of money is interested lately. Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Just one last. Shortly after I got on the council, I went to an economic development meeting they had down at Mueller Center. And it seems like some of the reason for Southern Hills economic development was to address the issue you brought up, Dave, that almost provide some competition for Rapid City. Because it's, I think Shedco kind of encompasses Hot Springs, Edgemont, maybe a little bit of Custer and Hill City so that there's opportunities in the Southern Hills so that as businesses or light industry are looking to relocate, whether it's, you know, we may not, Hot Springs may not be the best place for the business, but maybe we can house people or vice versa. But it would allow one corporation, Shedco, to sell this southern part of the hills.
As a whole.
As a whole and kind of come into competition because we weren't, you know, we were.
And to answer your concerns on Black Hills vision, Hot Springs was doing very well until a dysfunctional city council sued the developer. We had a number of economic leads coming in from the governor's office of economic development. And when that lawsuit came down, those leads stopped just like that. And so we shot our, the city administration at that time shut themselves in the foot. And all of those leads began to, and I know for a fact that I was in the Chamber in economic development at that time.
All right. Any other questions for Olivia while she's here for the Chamber? Okay. Thank you for providing that information and being here to answer our questions. We appreciate it. Okay, the other remaining item from Tuesday night's meeting was the water truck. We discussed the need. We wanted to verify the mileage of the vehicles, justify the needs, and then talk with our city mechanic and the water department. These are the vehicles in the water department. They're currently three and a half full-time employees that share these vehicles. The 2003 Ford F-250 has 122,000 miles. That's the big blue pickup that they use that has big boxes, heavy boxes on the back of it. It is used for hauling, but it's getting, it can't haul very much because of the heaviness or the weight of those toolboxes. And the only one that's really good for hauling is the 2018 Chevy Silverado 2500. The 2009 Chevy Silverado is just too small. So there's the answers to the mileage questions and what they have. Both Steve and Sean felt strongly that the need exists for the water department to purchase a new truck in 2020. They would like to have more than one that can haul their trailers and equipment. If they were provided a new truck in 2020, the 2003 Ford F-250 would be shared or then passed on to the street department who would plan to use it as another plow truck. So that answers that question hopefully for those that asked. The streets department, you'll notice there's a little change to that number than was at the end of the day Tuesday. We went down and up. The streets department, Steve was in to answer those questions. He filled in some blanks on some of the requests that Billy had shared. The streets would like to add 30,000 to their budget in machinery and equipment in order to replace two failing older model trucks that are currently in use. They'd be a 1996 Dodge Ram 2500 and a 1990 Dodge Ram 1500. They would take whatever budgeted amount, and we started at 20, but he thought 30 was more reasonable, but he'd take whatever amount is provided to the next state vehicle auction. And Steve would attend that and purchase the replacements for those two failing vehicles. In our conversation around the parks department machinery and equipment budget, they would be willing to lower their 2020 requested amount for machinery and equipment by $10,700. That would be down to $15,300. And they would use some of their remaining 2019 budget to purchase one of the two new mowers needed, and then they would therefore only need to purchase one. The difference, he did get quotes from John Deere for the mowers, and the difference is the trade-in. So we would be trading in two used mowers for the two new ones, but one of those purchases could happen this year. And then we were able to lower the amount needed and only trade up one for next year.
Can you bring up that one with the pickup and stuff on it?
Yep.
That 2003 Ford that they say is, the stuff's too heavy for, and the street department make a sand truck of it with hauling sand in the back of it? That's probably just as heavy as all the tools that they're hauling.
They're gonna put a plow on it and plow.
Yeah, but they still haul, haul sand in the backside and sand too.
I'm sorry, I don't know the answer to that. I'm not very mechanical.
They'll take the toolboxes out.
Well, I'm sure they will.
No, I think he said they planned to keep them the way it was. And they were just gonna put a plow on the front. He didn't say anything about hauling sand around. I believe it's like a flatbed. So where would you put the sand so it's all?
My only question must be whether or not they're gonna use the bed with the boxes on it on the new 18.
It's got a utility box, which is got big sides, the doors open up stuff.
That's why it gets a little heavy.
Yeah, and they wouldn't put those utility boxes on the new truck.
They would or wouldn't?
Would, they would not. They would give it to the streets department the way it is.
And I thought Billy wanted a new employee. Does he want the 30,000 for vehicles or a new employee?
Actually, the new employee's not budgeted for, so.
Well, I know it isn't, but he wanted one. And I'm thinking he needs a new employee since the city makes the street department do almost everything it needs done out of the water and sewer department. They're kind of scrapped for employees if you ask me.
Can we see the employee list for streets? Sure. Thank you, Misty. Yep. This is the streets department employee list. And we have names for these people, but they're seasonal rehired, so we don't plug them in.
Lexel's not there no more.
Yeah, but he's already been replaced. Kurt started on Monday.
One's cemetery, one's drives the street sweeper and Bart's saving. The other ones are parks department.
They're all shared under a city maintenance umbrella though.
I know that. Only ones that actually work on the streets would be Billy, Kurt, Steve, he's a mechanic, but he does help. New Kurt.
Bart moves snow, Lori moves snow.
In the winter time, yeah. Talking summertime employees, let's say get a lot more summer help. That's my opinion anyway.
Yeah, and that is, it is, that item is on our admin finance agenda to discuss, but we're not budgeting for any additional employees in that department. So the request from them is for the machinery and equipment.
I know Billy had it in his budget. Why did it, was it taken out?
What?
He had a new employee in his budget, he said.
That is what was in his budget last year and is in his budget this year. And he did hire seasonal help. So nothing was taken out.
Oh, he said it was. I just go and go, he said.
Matches the same as it was last year. No positions were terminated or eliminated.
Well, I know that. He's saying he just wanted a new employee with what he had.
While we're talking about streets and parks, it public works. We continue to have a conversation about the shelters in Centennial Park. And the decision was still to go ahead and remove the rock around the three, three sides of the shelters and replace them with grass and.
Dirt and grass.
Field dirt and grass. The west side of each of them replaced with cement. Billy wasn't sure that he had enough money in this year's budget to do that. It's not around the bathroom, it's around the shelters.
Okay, well, this was the notes that we had when we had the budget meeting all set together, and they added $1,500 for that project. And so if you want me to take out bathrooms, I'll just say around Centennial Park shelters?
No, 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 no. I don't want you to take it out.
Oh, okay.
I'm not suggesting that. But we were talking specifically about the shelters and my understanding was he was gonna go back and take a look and see if he felt that this year's budget could handle it or whether he needed to increase 2020's budget to handle it. Did he talk with you about that at all, Misty?
No, he did not.
I don't think he did, as far as parks, as far as boards and that.
I do know he was in attendance at the budget meeting that we had with all department heads and we discussed it at that time and it was in the budgeted format. And Bart did take a look at the fencing, Mayor, that you asked him to take a look at and it will not work.
Pardon?
Bart did take a look at the fencing and it will not work.
Yeah, good.
All right. So with the follow-up things from Tuesday night being discussed already, we'll jump into expenses in the general fund. That's kind of where we left off. We have a deficit in our general fund of $77,795. We're gonna start with mayor and council, the first one that comes up.
Seventy-seven what?
Seventy-seven thousand, roughly.
Seventy-seven, seven ninety-five.
Thank you. Seven ninety-five. All right. So projected budget for mayor and council is $48,525. I thought we had all these rows, but let me raise that first column so we can scroll So we project 42,000, no changes in salaries and wages, no changes to OASI or VICA, those are the payroll taxes, no changes to workman's comp. Insurance, $775. We're trying to anticipate the increase we saw last year for our insurance premiums. Professional services is, includes the annual hosting of the mayor's luncheon. Supplies and materials, $250. You might be able to drop that a little bit as historically you haven't spent much from there. We're not talking about much of the savings, but if you wanted to see that drop, I would feel comfortable dropping down to 150. Travel and conference, you are invited to attend. That is the amount that's been spent in the past, but more recently we haven't used that much. If you didn't want to attend as many or wanted to limit those, you could, but in the past, if you have people that want to go to things, the city does pick up the expense of that. Does anybody see any changes they'd like me to make in this one?
Is everybody comfortable with dropping again?
Supplies and materials?
Travel and conference?
Oh.
Oh.
150? 1500?
I have no problem with it. Like you said, it's small and we could obviously pick it up if we have to later on.
Okay. So with your permission, I'll drop supplies and materials, $50 to 150. And travel and conference, entertaining any farther drops, but I wouldn't want to get it too low and then deny somebody the opportunity to go get the training they need to do the best they can at their job.
That's acceptable.
1500 is acceptable? All right. Boy, if we could do that with every one of these 29, we'll be on track. Contingency, does everybody understand what a contingency account does and what we use it for? Okay, so we have dramatically decreased the amount we budget in contingency, but we offset that with trying to project much better our expenses and not allowing each of our departments to go over in expenses and then just applying contingency at the end of the year. We had this originally at 55, but after the mayor reviewed the expenses, we dropped that down to 50, which is similar to what we had projected for 2019. We just happened to have a little bit of money left over and we stuck it in contingency last year. Is everybody comfortable with this number?
Is it realistic?
We've been able to manage a 50,000 contingency account in the past. Now, if there's something that comes up, we're gonna have to address it other than contingency. But this would help with unexpected building repairs, vehicle repairs, if we had to replace some police department clothing, we dropped that budget a little bit. It should, it should be sufficient for those types of expenses.
Has it been used up 2019?
Oh, yeah.
Is it all gone or?
No, we're down to about 25,000 left or something, give or take 5,000. I could probably look. Because contingency transfers out, you don't spend it. Because contingency transfers out, you don't spend it out of that fund? I can tell you exactly how much we have left.
And the reason I felt comfortable in lowering it a little bit is because, well, primarily because of Misty. She watches very closely the funds and where they are spent and keeping people on track on the budget, and so.
Thirty-two thousand left this year.
And our departments are getting accustomed to that and watching their spending also.
If they get monthly budget reports, and we talk about overages, and.
And then if Misty doesn't catch it, Bob does on the admin finance side, so.
There's 32 left or 30?
Yeah, there's 32,000 left this year, but we've discussed a couple different things for contingency we haven't put in a resolution yet. So I do think we're closer to 25 left this year.
The wage comparison study came out of contingency, the codification came out of contingency.
Wheels, don't ask, do we have?
Just things that came up throughout the year that really was no way to anticipate budgeting, given that, you know, I can go back into the general budget if we don't use it.
But my honest opinion would be, as long as this is, 50 is realistic and doable, then I would say they would.
Yeah, I don't know if I'd be very comfortable going much lower, because this is our safety net for those kind of things, and we all know we can't prepare for everything, but we are comfortable with this number, both the mayor and I.
I would agree with you.
Legal's another area where we dropped the projection to 5,000 after mayor reviewed the budget. Year-to-date, on your reports, can you tell me where the professional services and fees for legal is at?
19,000.
Okay, so we're projecting 45,000. The $5,000 decrease is because in 2019, we had a lot of additional expenses related to corner construction, which, believe it or not, is a 12- or 13-year lawsuit we're still dealing with. And we've paid so many attorneys to get caught up on it, we're hoping that that gets settled and is done away with after this year, and we will no longer have those expenses related to it. If that's the case, and we're 19,000 year-to-date, this may be able to drop up 1,000 or so, but at 45, I'm pretty comfortable.
Was this related to?
Yeah, corner construction is. But these are all of our legal fees for any attorney services that we have throughout the year, yeah.
Compared to our previous attorney, we are, I think the fees are much more reasonable. One of the things that, again, the corner construction issue is very disappointing. We blew through all of our insurance money. We had an opportunity, apparently, to drop that under the previous attorney, and she was, she didn't do that, that wasn't caught. So we are still having to pay substantial, or this last year had to pay substantial amount of money for that, and that also included hiring some attorneys that had worked on it previous, so. I think we're, I think we're safe as long, again, as long as nothing big comes up, but again, we've got contingency backups covered.
Should we leave legal at 45,000?
I think so, 'cause you never know when something's gonna happen.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, the next one is the finance office budget. I think last time we were asked where the administrator, city administrator position comes out of this finance office, salaries and wages, it includes the finance officer, the assistant finance officer, the front desk administrative assistant, and the city administrator. We did lower this projected salaries and wages budget by 5,000, anticipating that a new hire in this department would not come in at the same rate that we were anticipating Kim to be at. With that subsequent lowering of salaries and wages, we were able to lower the payroll taxes and the retirement by 1,000. So we took 6,000 out of this budget. Workers' comp, group insurance, which includes all the health insurances offered by the city, and again, we don't know if a new city administrator would take the insurance or not, but we have it budgeted in there because Kim did. Unemployment, the South Coast Public Assurance Alliance insurance, which is our property and liability. Professional services include 5,000 budgeted for election, our Banyan payroll, fund accounting, and vault backup, and one-third of the point-of-sale Banyan services. We have supplies at 2,500, we'd be willing to drop that by 2,000, or by, I'm sorry, by 500 to 2,000. We were looking for new staff, or new staff chairs for our office, but we could probably find something on surplus and drop that by 500 if needed. And then travel and conference, we dropped down 500 to 3,000, anticipating that that would be enough.
When you say chairs for, I mean, you're talking about your.
The chairs we sit on at our desk.
Yeah, most chairs we sit on. Your actual, like, contoured chairs and stuff like that, is that what you guys are looking for?
Yeah.
Just wondering.
Yeah, so we'd be willing to drop that 500 if needed. Travel and conference, we already did drop our request by 500, thinking that we would move that up to the supplies, but we are facing a deficit, so.
If we don't buy the chairs you request, then is it, is it an ergonomic issue, or is to where?
No, they're just broken, the chairs, all of them are different, and three of the four are broken. I mean, they still work, but.
Are they comfortable?
I wouldn't say any of them are considered comfortable.
Okay, you guys sit down 6 to 8 hours a day, right? I mean, are you gonna start losing your savings on workers' comp because of injuries or illnesses?
I don't know. I project that. I could say that, but I.
To me, it's not worth trying to save $500 here if, oh, by the way, Misty or Karen or whoever isn't at work because of a on-the-job illness, so.
If three of ours broke, I wouldn't begrudge you chairs.
Yeah, we might be able to still find them, though, is my point, under the 2,000, maybe getting them from the surplus, but things like office chairs go very quickly, especially if they're in good shape.
I know we need to cut the budget, but is that, is that the only place where we're investigated to purchase from?
No, yeah, it is the cheapest. It's not the only place. We can get, we've got Tracy and George office chairs from Office Depot. We can, when it's time to purchase, what we're doing now is budgeting. When it's time to purchase, we always shop around.
Well, yeah, I know that. I figure if you bought four chairs at one time, or possibly five, that's one buy, it would be a fairly decent deal.
Hopefully.
And just an update for the council, on the city administrator position, the committee has looked at, we've got nine applicants, have determined there's three that are definitely qualified, that look like we're trying to be interviewed in the next, within the next couple of weeks. I don't know if you've got that email, I just sent it out. And it looks like three are marginally qualified, and then three that probably will go ahead and write a letter to and say they're not qualified.
Misty, can you go back to the spreadsheet that has the city administrator's wages?
Yes.
You had, my understanding was, you decreased salaries and finance ups by 2,000, thinking that.
Five.
Five, huh?
Yeah.
Five, huh? Thinking that the city administrator position would come in at a lower starting wage. Do you have a recommendation, as the committee's looking at?
86% top of scale, no higher.
No higher than 86%?
Yeah, George and I did that, now, when we talked about it, to make sure that we could still offer up, 80 is typically what we start at. 86 is, we'd be comfortable and still be within the margins we have there.
I think depending on the interviews and, or feel, we could start at 80 or 86.
All right, so any changes or no changes?
For your chairs, I would give it.
Okay.
That's my opinion.
Anyone else have any different opinions?
I'd be there.
Get more production out of somebody who's comfortable and not needed.
General government buildings is the department where city hall cleaning, our audit services and technology services, our copier maintenance, the postage for the entire city, paper envelopes, office supplies, our memberships, the city hall telephone, electricity and propane charges, our Fourth of July fireworks. We used to put our Banyan expenses in there, but we moved those to finance office this year. So if you notice that there was an increase here and a decrease here, the result is primarily due to the changing of the computer software to the finance office. Our city hall cleaner, no change there, no change to the payroll tax, the workers' comp went down a little, unemployment down a little, just based on the expense, insurance up just a little, that's the SDPAA, property and liability insurance. Professional services includes our audit expenses, I should put 2020 there. It's funny how many times you look at these things and miss that. We don't anticipate any change to our audit services, Black House Technologies, bank charges, if we have any. Ecolab is our pest elimination spraying that they do. I think there's one more. The city website with Robert Sharpen Associates, that went up last year, we upgraded. And then any minimal electrician plumber, heating, or air conditioning, which we do typically in this older building, have some issues each year where we need to call someone in and provide some professional services.
Misty, do we, by law, have to have an audit every year?
Yes. It's required by law, and now there's a fine if you don't do it.
Is there, is there, is there a way to cut that expense?
We shopped for auditors. We had Donna Danker and Associates first, because Cato provided our auditing services, and they charged us more. And then when we shopped for Cato to make them our full-time auditor, we shopped three places, Casey Peterson and Associates, Donna Danker, and Cato, and Cato came in much lower.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Publishing, all of the publishing for all of the meetings and hearings that happen come out of this budget. Building repairs, we don't have any big repairs, we did our roof in 2018, if you remember. We would like to eventually get the old side of city hall rewired, it's still got its old wiring, but we're putting that off, it's still working. We are looking and visiting with Marco Technologies to see if they can provide us a better agreement for our copier maintenance, but at this time, I'm not comfortable changing that. Supplies, historically, we've kind of been a little lower than that, that may be able to go down by 500 or even possibly 1,000, but these are postage, paper envelopes, and office supplies, and many other departments come and use those. So if we wanted to drop a little there, we'd probably be okay. Janitorial supplies, our janitors are pretty frugal, we might be able to save $100 or two there. Travel and conference, I don't see any room to drop, that just pays for memberships, nobody goes anywhere. Telephone, electricity, propane, really not a lot of room in any of those. Fireworks are always on the chopping block. That's a hot topic, you please half the people and don't please the other half, but as we're trying to bounce our budget, something to consider. After going through these, are there any recommended changes from the council?
Well, is this the year we talk about fireworks? All I heard is a lot of complaints, it was one of the worst shows we had, but I didn't go, so I can't say.
That was weather.
Yeah, I think it's because of the rain, and the fact, it, there's a, there's a training cost for the guys that, that have to put it on. It is a cost. It's a tough year, it's gonna be potentially a tough year for a couple of years. I like fireworks, I'm not against them, but is this the year that we say, maybe in 2020 we don't, we don't do it? Maybe we just hold off? It's not a bad idea. What's the school costing, sending those two guys to school for that?
We don't have an amount yet.
Oh, I saw it, I saw it.
Yeah, well, we have some money budgeted for traveling conference in highways and streets, and they didn't know how much the training would cost, or if they'd go and stay the night, or if they traveled together, so we just have it in our budget notes, and we did list in there, we may need to add more.
They don't go every year?
No, this would be the first year they go.
If we don't have the fireworks, they won't have to go.
That's right. But they probably still in that department need that small amount of travel conferences.
Yeah, I'm saying to take that out. There might be some left over for the budget next year. I would be in favor of not having it.
I know, it's probably, you know, it's unpopular, I, but it's, it's a tough year.
I sat up at the library this year, and there was more fireworks around the neighborhood than the city set off. So, I mean, you're gonna see the fireworks no matter what.
Ninety percent of which were not legal.
I know they wasn't, but just tell them.
We have some ticket money coming in.
I don't know how you would go about it, but I broached the subject many years ago, that maybe fireworks should be like on a donation type thing? Have people donate money to the, to the city to do the fireworks? But like I said, I don't know how you would.
The issue there, and I think that's a great idea, but Steve likes to purchase the fireworks before the 1st of January, because we get considerable about more for the, for the $5,000 than you do if you wait until you get the money. The other thing, Olivia, you can add to this, you know, the Fourth of July and the fireworks are designed from the duck race, the parade, and so forth, heat people in hot springs during that day. What are your thoughts on that, Olivia?
Personally, I don't like fireworks, my cats don't like them, but just because I don't like, I'm not gonna ask you to ban them, from a tourism point of view, it is the one thing that extends our Fourth of July longer. So when we lure people to town for Fourth of July, we're trying to create a weekend, not a weekend, but a two-day event, so your Friday night, the Rotary does the street dance, so we can get them to stay that night. And let's call it the Friday, but it's the third. So the Fourth, we've got the various different things going on. Just this year, the theater folks added the free screening, and I'm sure they'll do it again, possibly a different movie, Sergeant Stubb, about World War I dog, which gave us an afternoon activity. And then folks, we can lure them to stay with fireworks. If we don't have fireworks, it is possible that they come and enjoy the duck race and then say, no, well, it's for Custer or whoever. So is it possible that there's a way of maybe lowering it, but not removing it, and possibly doing, like what Bob suggested, of maybe getting some donation in? I'm not a grant writer, but is there some sort of grant you could ask Andrea that you can get for entertainment or something like that? I'm concerned doing away with it all together would be quite disappointing for the folks who do enjoy, but also from a tourism point, I worry they'll not stay.
There is another factor this year.
This year, no.
There are fireworks that month, I'm sure.
But they're gonna do those in 2020?
That's my understanding, that 2020 is, they're coming back to do that. And of course, that draws tens of thousands.
Mike North is a Ranger up there, and he said they're gonna have them.
Yeah.
And Custer has one heck of a display. I mean, it's nice, so we'd probably lose people in Custer anyway.
I always hear complaints that we don't have enough going on on Fourth of July, so I hate to be the one city that does not have fireworks, but we are also the veterans' town, so maybe we need to be conscious of those who don't like them, I don't know.
But in years past, we've had, we've had veterans come in that have kind of expressed the desire to not have because of the PTSD issues.
And experts on the PTSD have said that if you know that there's, what's going on, it's the startled reflex of not knowing, so I think sometimes that, that is kind of forgotten on that, but.
My thought is, is there a chance if the fireworks did go away, that more people would be shooting them up in the streets and? would be shooting them up in the streets and doing their own displays?
I think they do that anyway.
Yeah, they're gonna do that anyway.
Other people do. Would it increase or have no bearing?
Well, it'd probably increase a little bit, but for the most part, it's gonna be there whether we have a show or we don't. Was it, was it a quieter year this year? Because it seems to me as though it was much less than what I, what I've heard in the past.
I think the weather was a factor. We had a big thunderstorm moving in and rain during the show.
But even the, even the nights before and after.
Yeah, I think that they were down, it seemed like, I agree. And we're, we're actually into a future public safety meeting agenda item, because we've got a, this is, the non-city sponsored fireworks is something we've got to address because it's. This year, it, it was not as much of an issue for, because of the wetness. But one of the big issues and one of our big concerns, and I think Bill is, will address that in public safety, is the fire hazard of the non-sponsored fireworks.
You know, the way I look at it, this is Block Hill Fire District, and by firing off that, the fireworks, it did not, you begin with the city. But it's not a good thing. I mean, you know, our kids can fire off fireworks, you know, a little more than six feet high. And to me, this one holiday is more important for our kids than it gets as part of everything as adults. And it was awful short this year. I don't know how much money the city put.
Five thousand.
It wasn't worth fireworks. It was lasser.
Exactly. The casino spent over 30,000. And it drew thousands of people, and the revenue for that one day was a huge amount. You know, so it gets bigger and bigger every year. A lot of that is due to the fireworks displays and stuff that we have. We have promotions the day before or the day after. That's a huge revenue generator for fireworks.
If we were to cut out, if we were to cut out the fireworks, okay, so we saved $5,000. What are we gonna do, turn around and give it to what, what are we giving it to?
We're going through each one, so we, we don't have any to turn around and give right now, or make you cut some balance.
The way I'm, the way I'm looking at it is, I can see your concern about the safety. Really, we don't have a whole lot of, per se, functions that are, we share with vacationers. And really, you get a lot of people come through here for the joint. If you don't have anything, you're taking away from the citizens that are in town, which there's gonna be a group that's gonna say, hey, and then there's gonna be a group that's gonna get irritated. But you're pretty much losing interest on that day for that, for that pretty good-sized weekend or that week. You're pretty much cutting your own throat. Everybody in this town already complains that we don't do nothing for the rallying. We don't do nothing for so many different functions. Really, you're gonna start giving one away that we've traditionally had. I mean, if we want to cut it, I can understand that. You could always put it out there to the public that, you know, we don't have a whole lot of money, and we've cut our budget down to this, and any matching funds would be greatly appreciated. But I don't know. I think, I think you're willing to take on a, a whole lot of irritation just to just drop it all at one time.
I think it's important to note, though, that we wouldn't not have anything, because the Chamber has a lot of activities on that day. So fireworks are just one piece.
That's the one thing that they come to at the end of the day.
And I, I think, you know, I brought it up just because it is.
No, and it has to be.
It's, it is an optional thing, but Olivia brings up a super point, that it's late in the day, and it's, it puts heads on the bed, or potentially puts heads on the beds. And that's, you know.
Ultimately, that's what they wanna do.
Yeah.
They wanna see fireworks. And if the kids, they're gonna be disappointed, so let's be honest, they're gonna go to another town.
So let me just say, I brought it up. We had a heck of a discussion. As far as I'm concerned, we can move on.
Well, what I'm saying is, we could cut it, we could cut it down a little bit and just propose it to the public that, you know, we ain't got the money to give like we normally do, but any matching funds could also.
Unless we absolutely, if, if we can't find, if, when we're done, we're still $5,000, then let's cut it. But I like your idea of, let's leave it in, and then let's start publicizing, hey, if you didn't think the Fourth of July was big enough, we accept donations for fireworks.
Because it's gonna be responded.
But we don't, because we have to do our purchasing at one time with the vendor, you know, if they wanted to donate the fireworks, but the way we order them, we order them in bulk before the year, sign a contract, and then pay for it at the beginning of the year, and then they deliver it right before the Fourth of July.
Yeah, but that's not the only vendor we can get. You are, that, because of budgetary constraints, that you would like to see donations towards fireworks, I mean, it can apply to the next year. You don't have to, you don't have to give it to where it's gonna, you know, imperil what you've been buying in January for the July, that could be for the public.
And there are provisions, we can buy more during the year, but it just, it's a little less.
And I know at the very last minute, you still get commercial fireworks. I think if we were opened up for, if, if there was some way that you could begin doing donations, that might be a good way to tie in a lot more community support for it.
You can say that you need the money by January 1st, because that's.
Well, or like he says, it can go to the next year's fireworks, so it's got to be. It's, it's one thing, though, to sit here and project that people will donate money. We, you know, it's a whole.
The one thing you can project is if you drop it, you're gonna get a ton of calls.
We hear.
Versus, versus a ton of calls from people saying no.
Well, I, I know that next year, because I'm on the alumni board, next year's the 2020 all-class reunion, which centers on the Fourth of July weekend. That's very important, I think, to keep them, in a sense, as the 2020 reunion's gonna be attended. So maybe for that purpose, just keep in mind.
You're on the alumni?
I am, I'm the secretary.
Oh, you know, just a word to the alums about, you know, taking donations for fireworks.
Yeah, there we go.
There you go, Caitlin.
Chamber can start putting out, you know, hey, be prepared for next year, and we can start putting the call out that, you know, money's gonna be tight, whoa, 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 we'll prepare something together, and let it rip and say, start giving us some dough.
So I dropped supplies 500, I dropped janitorial supplies by 200. I think that we can absorb those. And then, for now, I have this at 5,000. Is that where we're leaving it? Is that what they consent assist?
For now, it sounds like we're leaving it there.
Or are we lowering?
I would leave it there, and still, you know.
We can come back.
Some donations to assist.
Dave?
Fireworks are kind of a 50-50 thing anyway. You can buy them and not be able to use them coming for it, for dry and if they're wet.
Yeah.
And then you can put on a heck of a show the next year.
And that's one of the things that we had a problem with, I think it was in '17, we had two years worth of this fantastic show.
Oh, yeah, that was. George, if you're not able to have the fireworks show, I mean, is there, is there any loss of, I don't know the word I want, is there any loss of potency to the fireworks?
No, they, they can.
They have the last.
Dave, I'd like to go back to your comment when you mentioned that you didn't think it was a big show this year, something wrong that way.
I was just told that I didn't go to it.
Well, I ask because I've heard the same thing. People were comparing it to last year. Last year was actually a two-year.
Oh, I know, I, I've been telling everybody, because Steve told me what actually they do.
You know, we've, we've really struggled with what is the right amount, and I think we're getting to a point where, you know, we're, we're trying to figure out whether 5,000 is the right amount or not. And with 5,000, we're gonna get the same show next year that we got this year. It's not gonna get any better.
Yeah. My, my thing is, if it's becoming, if it's becoming a possible cut, you know what I'm saying? If we leave it at $5,000 this year and put out there, very honestly, I, I know a Ford business people, they would probably donate a substantial amount of money to help. But the thing is, we, we need to put it out there. Nobody knows what we're thinking, so we need to put that out there. If we leave it at 5,000 and say, hey, to show us that it was deemed like it was just too little or whatever the conversation was, we tell them that we're at 5,000 this year, and if you wanna help, you can donate, or we can start a fund or an account that everybody can donate to, so come order time what the city's been spending and what has been donated. We know what we have, and we know what we can purchase.
You know, we're, we're at the point where, going forward, the shows are gonna get smaller.
Oh, yeah, yeah. And that's why I say, let's give ourselves a little chance to open that conversation up for donation.
And Olivia, the Chamber could help us by first making people aware of that, and then secondly, those businesses that do donate, if we could get publicity out on the, you know, the flyers that go out for the Fourth, the fireworks sponsored by the City of Hot Springs and so-and-so and so-and-so, so that's.
And we can, I, I, in my head, I don't have the figures, but I'd go back and look at budget and see if we can't add some fundraising elements to bump up our money for Fourth of July. Maybe sell tickets more earlier, something, something, and see where we could chip in a little. And I agree, if we get everybody invested in it, and just be honest and say, look, we're literally burning money here, but if it's something, it's good for the community, pitch in. And I think, given some time, we could get some raised money, but for now, we could just.
We could still have a conversation with who's bed, the motel's owners. I mean, it's gonna impact them, too.
One thing you gotta think of, it's been 5,000 for how many years? Fireworks has gone up every year, so it's getting less and less fireworks you get every year for the 5,000.
Olivia and I are excited about the idea of bid helping out, but we, we are not speaking for them, but they have a, you know, they have a budget, and they have the other current expense line item in their budget, and that would be a good community fund piece.
If we're to compete with Custer or Prairie Winds, it's spending 30,000.
Oh, I, I would not try to compete with anybody. There's always gonna be somebody that's better than you are, so why even get into that race? My thing is, we love to say we historically are the veterans' town, and then you have that conversation, say, well, the historical veterans' town, they ain't having no fireworks. So I don't know.
You know, Bob asked how long, I'm gonna lie, I'll tell you. You know where I live, by the time I loaded up my grandchildren, went down there to closer, by Madison Park, the finale was going on. That's it. That's the day it's gone.
That's $5,000.
Yeah.
That's what I said.
And it started early because of the line of thunderstorms coming early. They needed to get those out before they were lightning and, and wet, so.
Anyway, I, I had my say.
Leaving it, taking it out, lowering it, hoping for some matching.
I would think it's just leave it if we have to.
Okay. I've been asked to jump ahead to the library's budget since Dawn is here. We didn't really invite department heads to come and speak, but there are some requests in the library budget in 2020 that have not yet been approved by the full council, so I think Dawn's here to kind of speak more on that specifically.
One of our requests is, last year, the council was kind enough to allow us to have a part-time person for 200, or 550 hours at $10 an hour. It came to about $6,000. And in an effort to keep that person, I wanted to, I only brought two copies of this, but you're welcome to pass around.
$66.30.
Sixty-six thirty, okay. To share with you that our summer reading program grew by 25% this year, and we could have never have done that without our extra person. And that's following through with our storytimes and our programming that we're doing. We've had a big increase in the kids coming to the library, so. But this is the, the charts and graphs that Amanda made for me, for our summer reading program this year. In an effort to keep our part-time person to the tune of 6,000 and some dollars, we, we gave this as a beginning budget request, and we've cut back at a couple of places, and the mayor asked if, you know, if we couldn't find another way to cut back for the other $6,000. And I had a board meeting last night, visited with the board. We did visit the idea of upping our rates for the county patrons, because it was a short suite meeting just simply over this. We didn't make any decisions on that. For those of you that are new, I go back and forth with the county commissioners every year. A third of our, a third of our library patrons are from the county, so ideally, they should pay a third of our budget, which runs to about 70,000, 60 to 70,000 dollars every year, a third of our budget. They historically give you $20,000. I can't seem to get them to budge with all my different approaches. The other thing would be, they tell me to go ahead and charge every, every county patron the $75 that I should charge. And we all know how that's going to go over with the county patrons in our.
That are currently paying five.
That are currently paying five, yeah. So we, we've got some more work to do with that.
Backup to that one, no?
I know.
You weren't charging $5 for county people, but you've been, somewhere down the line told that you could, should be charging 75?
If, if I take my total number of patrons and divide them out, a third of them are county patrons, and two thirds of them are city patrons. The city patrons pay through their city taxes.
Property taxes.
Property taxes, so. The county patrons, at this point, there is no tax lien against them to pay for library funds. So I go to the county, or to begin with, I go to the county every year and say, you know, once again, here we are, I've got a third of my library patrons, you guys can be paying me 60, 70,000 dollars a year to cover a third of my budget. They always give me $20,000 and tell me to have a nice day. So I, I can't seem to impress upon them how important it is that the county patrons have a fee to access to the library. So they'll give me $20,000 this year, like they have every year. I'm not expecting anything more from them.
So if you did raise the county fee per se, are they starting to give you their $20,000? Or is that gonna become a contentious?
That's gonna become.
An argument.
An argument. There are people that come to that meeting that are like, we should either pay the library the money that we owe them for our county patrons to have it for free, or the library should charge the county patrons the total amount. And it works out to be about $75 a person, based on our library card numbers. It works out to be about $75 a person to use the library.
And what would that total be in a year of just your county?
It would change based on our budget every year.
Yeah, it would change based on my budget. We have, how many patrons? Because it goes up. I would say we have about 3,500 patrons, which is what our city population is. So a third of that is the county patrons. But if I start charging $75, we are not gonna have those many patrons.
Oh, no.
And if we would have just minimally.
Yeah, and, and we did discuss it at the meeting last night, if we change it from $5 individual, $10 family, if we change it to 750 and 1250, but still.
It's just less than $3,000. We're talking about as an increase.
Yeah.
I would go 10 and 15.
I really need the county to.
Belly up.
To belly up. You know, a third of my business is taking care of county people, but my profession is to be a librarian and take care of whoever locks in the door. But money-wise, that's how that works out. But I kind of wanted to let those of you that are new to this know that, yeah, I really wish I could get a third of this budget to my county.
And I'm not talking down on the whole situation, but what it sounds like to me is the county is forcing. And I'm not talking down on the whole situation, but what it sounds like to me is the county is forcing it out of the city. So the city is picking up the county's portion of the bill.
Exactly, exactly. And they're, they're wanting us to be the bad people by saying, if we want our budget to come out right, I got to charge seventy-five bucks to people.
Dawn, how many non-Fall River County users do you have?
Not that many. That would be our nineteen oh fours. I want to say two hundred, two hundred something. They get the five and ten dollars, anyone that's, that does not live within our city limits. And that includes the domiciliary guests. They, they are visitors to our community, they're not, they don't contribute to the tax base per se by paying property taxes or whatever. So the domiciliary guests pay the five or ten dollars. And then anyone that lives outside of the city limits. And that literally means, valid, you drive, the people on this side are free and the people on that side aren't. But, yeah, that's something that I, if you have any suggestions when I go to the county commissioners, something else I can, because we're kind of right at a stalemate over who's going to.
Can't we just tell them, well, they could, they, county folks could use the library, but they can't check anything out?
Have they agreed to the amount for this year yet, do you know? Because I know you already did go and present.
No, I went in and I gave them.
You haven't heard any.
I gave them my, my big number and reasons why. And they have historically, for the past ten, fifteen years, given us twenty thousand dollars. They budgeted twenty-five, five of it goes to the Edgemont Library and twenty-five to us, so.
Dawn?
Yes?
You had mentioned that you broke down the number of county users into the percentage of users and then figured out, based on that, they should be paying seventy-five dollars because their next number of percentage of the budget. And the city folks get it for free. Have you looked at what the city folks would be paying if, if they weren't funding it through all the other, you know, taxes? Where you, you said that we don't pay for it because our taxes and all those other kinds of things effectively are paying for it. But what is that contribution?
Two thirds of the budget.
Okay, so what does that come out to then? What, what would we pay?
I take the whole budget and I divide it by the number of cards that I have.
What I'm trying to get at is, is that a five dollar benefit to us? Is it a ten dollar benefit? What is the benefit? What are we, what are we?
You're probably talking like twelve dollars.
So eighty-nine, two. Would be a hundred and seventy, so two thirds of your budget for this year as presented is a hundred and seventy-eight thousand four hundred. You said you have about thirty-five hundred patrons with about, how many of them being from the county?
A third.
Do you know what that number is?
Say eleven hundred, eleven hundred and fifty.
Eleven fifty?
Yeah. I do ABCs, numbers are, I have to work at numbers. That's what we have to see.
So we said thirty-five hundred total and about eleven hundred comes off of that, right? So twenty-four hundred, so if I divide that by twenty-four hundred, I think what you're looking for is that number.
Seventy-four dollars.
Yeah, seventy-four dollars.
So the benefit to us is seventy-four dollars. And the county gets it for five.
Exactly.
And that works out because it's about a seventy-five dollar benefit to the county.
And we're worried about the one under ten or fifteen dollars.
Yeah. So part of that is, there is a giant portion, if we, if we check to see the the ratio for how much of our county lives under poverty level. So for them to pay seventy-five dollars is, I'm a little mistaken.
I'm not suggesting it was seventy-five, but I'm just wondering why we're, why we're pressing with ten and fifteen?
Because, because they're.
Essentially, we're paying seventy-five for ours and all the other fees that we're paying.
Well, I really wish the county would pay for, pay for their people that come through the door.
Okay, but if they're not.
Because the people that come through the door, they can't do the seventy-five dollars.
And I'm not suggesting seventy-five. What is wrong with ten or fifteen?
I have several homeschool families that there, there's probably four or five kids in the family.
But it's a family fee, right?
Yeah.
Fifteen would be a family fee.
Yeah. So this is something that we need to talk to, that I need to talk to. The board and I need to talk further on, because the board, our library board is the one that sets that. And I've told them that you are coming to the next board.
I think that that's something that I disagree with, that the board sets that. I think it's this council that sets those rates based on the board's recommendation. And I think the board needs to understand that.
So me as a taxpayer, I give a library card free.
Yes.
Why?
Because you live inside the city limits.
You've already paid your seventy-four dollars when you pay your taxes.
The city charges, Evan's Plunge charges, city people go swimming at the plunge and we pay taxes. So I'm just saying, why, why, it shouldn't be free.
We pay taxes.
Libraries are free.
It doesn't.
Well, I understand that, but we, we pay taxes, can you go swimming at the plunge?
Well, but isn't there South Dakota codified law requires that if we have a library, it is free to the, it's, there's something in the.
There's something in there.
Yes.
There's something in there that says the tax base where that library is located.
It's the tax base.
It's the tax base. So whoever lives, it's a city library, whoever lives inside the city limits, it's, it's a free library.
Yes. That's, that's my understanding.
And it's, it's just a way of, it's just a way of looking at it.
We could still.
But really, what the rest of us are trying is.
Well, it's a state law, you turn it in the street, but we still do it, so.
Let's not go down that road.
I'm just saying.
The, the thing is, is we've just figured out that even though it's free to us per se in a conversation, we aren't paying seventy-four dollars a piece as a family, basically, for our.
Taxes.
Yeah.
For taxes, for the library, okay? And the county people are being offered for five dollars, that's correct?
Well, the twenty thousand dollars and then the usually five or ten dollars.
Okay, and, well.
I, I wish somebody could help me with the commissioners, they.
There's really, for you and, and, let's, let's be honest, you don't want to do nothing that's going to hurt anybody that's going to the library.
Exactly.
I understand that. But at the same time, there is a reality of money only goes so far. I mean, I could be, I could be.
I think the commissioners have the money to do it.
Oh, I know the commissioners have the money.
I just can't get them to move on the subject. But anyways, I needed to let you guys know that there is some more funds out there. I just can't get those people to let go of it. You know, there's, you know, ideally, there's a third of my budget out there that I, I can't get collected.
Can I ask you an honest question? Do you think your services are reaching outside your funding? I know that our library is, for this area, for a rural area, is a very, very good library.
Yeah.
That we offer services that other towns don't even consider with the populations a little bit larger than ours. So.
I don't.
I mean, it's, I, I'm not trying to be
I'm, I'm.
A bad guy here, but I'm just being realistic. Are we trying to stretch yourself for the budget that we have for a this size community?
That's a good question, that's something that I will think about. I know that the people that generally come in and get the out of, out of city cards are really good library users, they use it regularly. They're, the only ones that are, I would say, transient are our domiciliary guests. Otherwise, everybody lives in the community and this is where they shop and where they buy. You know, just up in Ardile Road and out in Oral and over in Edgemont. But as far as, yeah, we don't offer, we don't offer services to people out of our area.
That's not what I'm talking about.
Okay.
What I'm talking about is the services for the size of community that we have and the funding that we have for the services that you, as a group at the library, are reaching to get to. Is that a little more than what our budgeting income can provide?
I don't know, I don't know what we should cut, the computer classes? That take place during business hours or the children's storytime or?
David, are you suggesting that maybe we're under budgeting?
No, what I'm suggesting is, if you stop and take a good look at it, we have a beautiful library, I agree, and I do like it, but I think we went a little over and above what we, what was necessary as a structure for it. And in keeping, and so, all the services that we are providing right now are stretching the budget that we have as a city to portion out for the library.
Well.
I have heard, I've heard my, I have a cousin that came here two years ago, went to our library and said, the library you have right now exceeded the ones that she deals directly with the library, the community she lives in of forty thousand.
Yeah, it does, but we, we get the people in the door. We get five, four to five thousand people a month through our door. My computer.
Yeah, but they don't pay nothing.
Well, two, a third of them, two thirds of them.
Do you see what I'm saying here?
My computer usage, people are using the library. My computer usage last year, I didn't bring my little flyer.
I'm not trying to.
No, and let, let me, let me step in because I, I hear what Dave's saying, but I also, and I see what Dawn has provided.
Oh, I.
People use my library.
I know, and, and let me give you, okay, this and seven dollars will get you a latte at the coffee shop. So it's my opinion, is I think we're, I think we're right on that edge. I think we're actually providing a little more than we can afford. That's why we've had this long discussion.
But the people are.
Right, I'm not arguing, but what that tells us is that a five dollar library card is too cheap. So if we can maintain the services that you have identified that our community wants and uses, therefore, a five dollar library card ain't going to cut it. And we need to bump up the cost, and if we can bump up the cost of a five dollar library card a reasonable amount, and I don't know what that is, is it ten? Is it a fifteen? That's what we got to figure out. Then I think we are, we are able to afford what you have provided and what the community desires. But, you know.
Yeah, we're right on that line.
The discussion we had last year when you came and requested it. I see the need, I, I, I see the need, I voted against it because I couldn't see how we could sustain it. And we're kind of at that same place. Now, if we can raise sixty-six hundred dollars without cutting, we can't, the carpet's got to get cleaned sometime. You've got to use propane, you, you, we can't defer maintenance forever. So revenue has to come in. So if we can raise a little revenue, I'll raise both hands and vote for this. And, but I, and I think that's what Dave's saying.
I'm trying to find, I'm trying to find a, there has to be a compromise here. I mean, this, very honestly, I used to be, was head chair of library work for four years. I do know what you provide, and I notice you provide even more now. The thing is, is we're not charging enough to begin with where you're at. You are still reaching for more services that you want to provide and keep a very maintained library, but nobody else is pitching in. You're, you're basically asking the same three thousand people to, you keep pausing it up, we'll keep divvying it out, but yet you got so many other users outside, they ain't provided nothing yet. Twenty thousand isn't enough.
How much will you raise if you start charging for movies? Two dollars, a dollar checking out?
You got your report that shows how many movies were checked out, almost just as many movies as books, if not a little bit more.
Yeah, there, there, movies is about fifty-fifty of books. Because we're the only place in town to get them.
I'm, I'm still baffled, why do we have to have free, the library free?
Here it is, we found it, it's a fourteen dash two dash twenty-seven public library, any library that serves free of charge, all residents of a local government union.
Yeah, I know what it says, but why? Do they, do they give you an explanation why you have to give it free? I mean, just because the city owns it?
Because it's considered a public library?
Well, why is it, why isn't everything the city owning, like the golf course at Evan's? I don't know, that's what I'm saying, I just.
They're not pub, they're not the same as a public library by definition, I don't know.
Public pool, isn't it?
No, Evan's Plunge is not a public.
Is that a statute, though?
Yes.
It's a statute.
Evan's Plunge is a for-profit business that the city owns, just like a liquor store is a for-profit business that the city owns. The plunge is a for-profit business that the city owns, not, the library is not a for-profit business.
When we talk about staffing.
The golf courses, too, right?
Yep.
And adding additional staff and needing additional staff. We bought the pro shop, didn't add any staff to the finance office at the city hall. We bought the plunge, we didn't add any staff to the finance office at the city hall. We have over a hundred employees who pay it every two weeks, we never added any staff at the city hall. So we've just absorbed the additional work and managed handling it with the staff that we have, so.
That's been like that since it bothered that.
Since forever, we haven't added anybody since forever, so.
Well, the, we do kind of.
Let's, let's, let's maybe offer a solution here. First of all, I think if you want that additional part, we need to raise the revenue part, at least by that amount to pay for that library clerk. And I would suggest that we, we do it in two ways, that we start charging for movies, because that's something that we give away free that I think we should, we should charge for, and also raising the rate of our non-resident.
I think that we won't get half of those movies checked out.
For a dollar?
No.
Okay, well then, but if we get, how many, how many did you have checked out?
Just sec, on the movies, can we, Bob, didn't you look at that? Are we allowed to charge for movies?
I don't think we can charge for things that we check out. We can, we, we charge for copies, we charge.
We charge people they have, like, check out a projector or a boat.
No, I don't think you can charge for things that you check out. I can charge for a card. But I think things have to be free.
Well, then I think we're going to have a little issue, because I can't see giving the library more than. Because basically, what it's going to come down to, very honestly, is I give you the sixty-six hundred dollars. And, and granted, I am not going to argue the fact that it's not for a good thing, okay? I'm not, because I think it is. But then again, let me ask you a question, or you can go to your, your group and ask them, give us an answer. Where do you want us to take the money for public services?
They, they gave me some alternatives to readjust this, this until we figure out about the, the charging thing.
I mean, that's, that's kind of where we're at. I mean, we got to pick and choose what, what services we are going to provide and plus try to help those to stay in actual business, are providing their services. It's kind of hard for us to pick and choose and take away from other good stuff, too.
So why'd the cleaning go up that much higher from last year to this year?
They raise it every year, but they weren't going to raise it this year.
Yeah, they didn't raise it this year.
It's a, how much, eight hundred and seventy dollars?
Seven, seven thirty-five, seven, it's something. We did it out a couple of years ago.
Well, last year, you have fifteen thousand five hundred and fifty to go.
Last year.
They lowered their request last year, the red highlight means they lowered it to pay for their part-time library person.
Yeah.
That was kind of your way of adjusting for.
Yeah, because it had already been, the budget had already been set.
Fit within that for the year, I was concerned when we lowered it that we, at the end of the year, would exceed those lower amounts we lowered them to because expenses don't really change that much. But we haven't hit the end of the year yet to see that, so.
I want you to understand, personally, I am pro library, I really am. Realistically looking at things.
I, I too think that we're going to have to raise our rates.
Yeah, there has been though, in my honest opinion, there has been though, nothing done on your end to say, hey, we've tried to raise this money, I really haven't seen that, to be honest.
Seven hundred and thirty dollars a month for black kids special services.
Close to eight thousand seven hundred dollars for the year. The one I really need is G and R. The one I really use, G and R controls, but because they put in the system, it's.
So you said you had some adjustments?
Yes, I see you already took that down to four thousand, because on my sheet I had it still at five.
Yeah, and I think I sent you an email.
Yeah, that the manager suggested it be down to four.
And we really talked about, you know, why are we, why are we doing back patio repairs when our roof needs repair? Why aren't we budgeting for the roof first before we do any enhancements?
Is that annual library conference a necessity of sixteen hundred dollars?
This year it wasn't very much because it's in Spirit Fish, but generally, every other year, it's Sioux Falls or Aberdeen or, and we only send two people.
Doesn't it say Pier in there?
Sometimes it's at Pier.
It says East River twenty-twenty. And then Dawn goes to a jumpstart conference in Pier, which typically you get a grant that pays for that travel. And then Amanda is a, a youth book selector and so she's.
She's in the, the state selection committee for the Prairie Pass Prairie Bud, and they have actually done all of their conferences via Skype this year, so.
So can we, is that one that you guys recommended that maybe we can lower?
Um.
Because we didn't get there, if you had some adjustments.
Yes, we could probably take about three hundred dollars off that one.
Were there others?
Yes, our book one.
Nothing in professional services can be lowered?
No.
Okay, nothing in supplies?
We could take a couple, a hundred off that one.
One hundred?
No, a thou, yeah, no, a thousand. Remember that one up there?
Yeah, I do it all the time, no? And then a couple hundred off here?
Yes.
Down to fourteen?
Yes, because she's in charge of that committee and she does it all by Skype, and everybody's really excited that we have to travel.
We do all of our election workshops out, I know. And anywhere else?
Can I ask a question?
It was books.
And, and looking at past years on what was spent to budget seven thousand, is this, is this savings from the LED?
Yes.
Yes. Our electric bill is, since the LED, it's been a third less every month.
Yeah, we're at.
So instead of being a thousand dollars, it's only six hundred.
Thirty-seven hundred for twenty nineteen year-to-date, that's how we came up with that lower amount.
Okay, well, I see it was thirty-seven sixty-eight.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, putting in the LED conversion saved us a third of our electric bill.
That's good.
I don't know if I'd say a third.
Well, from, instead of nine hundred and something, it's six hundred and something. You know, it were.
Still out.
Yeah.
Why is the group insurance so much higher this year?
Because our group insurance went up twenty percent, and it goes up mid-year, so we're anticipating for that increase, which we didn't know in twenty nineteen, which we didn't budget for, we have to supplement and incorporate for, and then we're estimating a twenty percent increase for next year, hoping that we won't have a twenty percent increase.
Misty and I kinda have a mind, everything from here up is hers and everything from here down.
But I argue that because none of it's mine, it's all library, but I calculate it for them.
Yeah, I, Misty budgets what that is, because she knows. And the other little bit was a couple, a thousand or two off books. You should know that we do have a Friends of the Library. They are a separate entity from the library. There are separate funds, separate everything. I'm invited to their meetings to answer any questions that they have, I'm not part of that organization. The Friends of the Library under law can make certain donations to the library. They can, they can help us buy books, they can help us buy supplies, they can help us with our summer reading program, they can help us, they can help us buy new carpet, but they can't help us clean the carpet. Does that make sense? Anything that's the basic.
It doesn't make sense. Is there any damage done in that day or would make that person responsible?
Yeah, um, so, um, I, I can go to a Friends of the Library meeting, say I'm running low on book money come October, November, I can go to the Friends of the Library and say, you know, we've done really good, here's our, you know, I, I can request funds from them, but I cannot budget funds from them, does that make sense?
Yeah, I can understand that.
Yeah, it's like, anything I ask from them is simply a request and they can decide whether they want to honor that. They have, actually, since we've opened the library, the Friends of the Library have bought, we have twenty-one computers, every year they replace seven of them. Which runs into ten or twelve thousand dollars a year.
That is a very good process and you know all that.
Bob, who's got a comment?
Yes, Bob, yes, Bob!
He's got more than a comment.
Thank you.
You're proposing reducing your book budget.
Because I can, I can ask friends.
To me, a library is books, and we're looking to reduce the book budget so we can hire staff, and as I've looked through the monthly, the, every two week bills, and I remember having part of this conversation when we said, "Go ahead and fund the position we're talking about now out of this year's budget," that I'll do a real good job of, you know, watching what we're spending, books and all those kinds of things.
And, and.
And I can't say that I've really seen a decrease, a significant decrease in that. And now we wanna reduce books for staff, and there's a hesitation to re, to increase the cost for the cards. It, it seems like increasing revenue is just something that somebody is resistant to doing, and we'll adjust all these other things.
We are going to increase the revenue, and I would think, at least, and that's gotta be increased at least to make up the cost of the personnel. These other, the other situation, the other things that we are, are doing, I think are, they help the rest of the, the city budget, but I agree, we, we can't, we can't absorb that cost of that personnel unless the revenues go up, and they've gotta go up to that much. And the library board does, makes a recommendation, it is this council that decides what those rates are. We have to be careful, but that message has gotta go back to the library board. We also have to be careful with how we deal with Fall River County, because we share a dispatch center for fifty-five thousand dollars, that's, that, that has remained constant. If we make a lot of press and I demand seventy thousand from them for the, the library, that dispatch.
Could get more expensive by seventy thousand dollars, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, and the other thing is the ZERKER, we've got a very low amount that we're scheduled to, to pay. Paul Knappholz, the commissioner, was in this, that meeting when we were discussing taking that, that, that system. The county's amount is considerably more than ours, and I'm sure that I can see the wheels turning of how some of that money could be passed on to the city if we wanna be a part of that, that system, so.
I'm, I'm not suggesting that we ask the county for more money.
Yeah, but I'm just saying.
We ask county residents to pay a more fair share for their card than what it could be paid.
Individual, yes.
But that's not unreasonable.
What?
That's not unreasonable.
I agree with you there. At the same time, what I'm trying to bring up is, like, they have passed over some of the stuff that we wanted to apply for in grants, because we didn't keep up with our end of taking care of ourselves. That is what I'm trying to tell you. It's been thrown on us before, and basically, I am seeing exactly the library doing exactly the same thing. You're, you're, you're hesitant to charge what you need to charge just to do it yourself, and you're asking the same group that's already paid once to, let's pay some more, and it's kinda, after a while, it's kinda hard to pick between this good job or deed and this one, who do I take it from? So I have to ask, I have to be kinda firm on my end to say, show me what you're doing the best you can to make more for yourself.
And I don't have the authority to tell you tonight to do that.
No, I'm not expecting, you know, I'm just trying to be straight and honest with you.
So, yes, I understand what you're saying, and I really, the board knows that you're coming to visit with us, George. And, but for the, the short meeting last night, because, you know, we needed to have a little short budget meeting to see how this was all washing out, I did some, some talking with my friends today, and back and forth, and they felt that, should we find ourselves in a bind? I gave them a dollar amount and said, should we find ourselves in a bind with some supplies or some books? Would you be willing next year to help us out with this dollar amount? And they said they would have a meeting of, so I kinda made my request earlier.
And, and it's not a, in my eye, mind, it is nothing out of the question that.
And if.
Partnered down in the, in the year. We possibly could help you more, but as of right now.
Yeah, and we raised the rates and they take into, they take a effect.
So Ms. Dawn, will you have them give us a number of what, next time you guys all meet, give us a number is what they're recommending as far as the, the raise of the rate, and then we can go?
The rates, yes, I think that will probably be, that'll be discussed in August and.
Okay.
But we have to pass our budget, I have to have the budget ordinance ready for the first reading in September, so.
Yeah.
And that's the, that was. In our revenue projections.
And that was why they suggested I, I make some cuts now, because I, I really didn't know, I thought this might have to be done sooner than the first of September, so.
So your committee sets what cards cost for county residents?
They recommend.
They recommend.
Yeah, the library trustees.
The council is the one that.
Well, you should strongly recommend that they change that. I mean.
You know, I think we've, we've, we've hit this one hard enough, you know, we gotta raise the rates, we made some cuts, I appreciate that, we've got a great library, let's move on to the next item.
So, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Where are we? We finished with general government buildings, and we left.
This library's in there.
Oh, I get to get it to you?
And that's my membership.
Okay, so the next one is engineer, this is Tracy Bastian. Only twenty percent of his actual salaries and wages are paid out of this fund, the remaining is split between water and wastewater. Eighteen-five for salaries and wages, payroll, taxes, retirement, it's also split, workman's compensation, group insurance, if you noticed years past, was quite a bit higher. We decided in twenty nineteen, it didn't make any sense to split his salaries and wages and pay all of his insurance out of this fund, so we started splitting those like we do with the salaries and wages. Unemployment, insurance, vehicle repairs, he did get a new vehicle this year, supplies, they're all very minimal, I don't see much room for cutting in this budget, maybe a hundred dollars in gas, oil and diesel, he historically has not used big amounts.
Yeah, but if you got a new vehicle this year.
Yeah, I might drive it some more. Might get better gas mileage than the old one, though, so we may be able to cut a hundred from there. Travel and conference, we did talk about this, he requested a little bit more, I asked him what the request was for, and he would like to attend more professional conferences if available, he was not real comfortable dropping that number any.
He's a professional engineer, and professional engineers have to take.
Continued education.
He's a aeronautical engineer.
No, he's a, he's not. He is a.
That's what he told me, was.
He is, he is a mechanical engineer by degree, but he's a registered civil engineer.
And then we do split his cell phone bill between water and wastewater also. One item that has been pushed off year after year, he's running AutoCAD twenty-eleven, and we talked about upgrading that, but he said it should be sufficient for the next two to three years, long range, we will eventually have to upgrade that, but he said he's okay for the next couple of years.
That travel and conference, just a question, when he goes to those, does it add anything to his?
Pay?
Well, not really his pay, but does it help, does it help the city in any way?
Yes, it helps him keep his certification.
Certification, okay, and there's certain things that if we didn't have a professional engineer to sign up on, we would have to pay a submission, a significant amount to get a.
A lot more than engineering.
How come only twenty percent's coming out of engineering?
It's the way it's been since I started, twenty, forty and forty, it's the way we go for it. Forty out of water, forty out of wastewater and twenty out of general government.
And that property spends a lot of time.
Oh, I know, you know, it's worth putting in that position.
Well, I see nothing to cut here.
Except maybe a hundred dollars from gas, oil and diesel's the only thing I see.
I don't think that's worth even bothering.
What's that?
I don't think it's worth bothering, but.
Oh, okay. Anybody else have an opinion on that? Leave it.
I'll come.
Okay, next one's a big one. This is the police department budget, this is the single largest budget in the city. We are projecting three hundred and eighty-one thousand in salaries and wages, it's a four point five percent increase over the projected amount budgeted to cover overtime and holiday pay. All these go in line with that, payroll taxes, retirement, workman's compensation, group insurance, unemployment, this is our SDPAA insurance, liability and property insurance. Professional services, this is where they pay their janitor for cleaning, they pay three thousand dollars a year, their Marco copier contract, their serve-all, and then they also pay for uniform alterations, and then they have a little bit left in professional services for the unknown expenses, so there may be a small amount that could be cut from there, but wouldn't leave them a lot of cushion.
Misty, does any of the police reserve have any revenues?
Uh, they do for clothing, in this budget, we do provide for clothing. Vehicle repairs, they do have a newer fleet, so we have reduced repair expenses, five thousand won't go very far if there's something big, but they're comfortable with that dollar amount. Building repairs, they have no planned repairs in twenty-twenty, that could be dropped, but you know, the second you need to call somebody in because the heater's not working or something, you can spend.
Did their H C just mess up the other day?
Did it? You can spend two hundred and seventy-five dollars pretty quick. Equipment repairs, two thousand eight hundred and fifty, that's for a new taser, taser cartridges, the annual calibration of radars, the P V T tests, that's it.
Does everybody carry a pager on the police department, no?
No, they all have cell phones.
What's a P V T?
It's blood alcohol, I don't know what the P stands for, but it's a blood alcohol test.
Breathalyzer.
Oh, it's not a blood test? It's a, oh, okay, something to do with alcohol.
Have to have tubes every time. How about tasers, everybody carry a taser?
Yes.
Yes.
And those taser charge things don't last, they have to have those recharged or whatever you do. Supplies, they have sixty-three hundred, that's twenty-five hundred dollars for office supplies, three thousand for ammo, eight hundred for citations. That seems like a lot of ammo, but they do have to certify with their guns, so they do have to shoot them.
Can I ask a funny question? Maybe it's a stupid one, I guess, you got supplies on there, we're reading, but above what you have, supplies and materials, so what exactly is the difference between?
Great question, so D L A, Department of Legislative Audit, they prescribe the codes that we use, and so this is our fund code prescribed, all cities use one-on-one for their general fund. This is the police department code, four-two-one, all cities use that code. They give you the heading for the code, so all supplies and materials go under four-two-six. We have the levity to add four-two-six-one-zero, four-two-six-three-zero, four-two-six-three-three, and name it whatever we want, but it all falls under that category of supplies and materials, and they call that the object code. Yeah, I should have probably summarized that at the beginning, so you know where all these numbers come from.
So supplies, clothing, janitorial supplies.
Those are all considered.
On all kind of subgroup of.
Supplies, yeah.
So why's the clothing in yellow?
I just have that highlighted because the request includes two new vests for twelve hundred, six hundred dollars clothing per officer at a total of forty-two hundred, one hundred per reserve officer for a total of five hundred, incidentals of five hundred, which when you're budgeting for that, one of the reasons I have that highlighted and in red is because what's an incidental? I've just budgeted for everything I said I'd give you, and we're cutting budgets. And then they also want new badges at a total cost of eleven hundred dollars. Uh, he did give a pretty good presentation about what was wrong with the old ones, some of them have been messed up, they faded, they weren't the best badges to begin with, and with all the new reserve officers, they want everybody to have new matching badges. And the new badges, correct me if I'm wrong, have some kind of warranty?
They have a lifetime warranty.
Lifetime warranty on them, so. So I have that one highlighted because there might be a little room to cut there, but.
So they get six hundred dollars a year for clothing?
Each.
Quite a bit, isn't it?
Not really.
They have served about ten hundred bucks, and we have. They have about 100 bucks, and we have one officer goes through about four pairs of boots a year, so
Seems like
And once they're fully equipped, maybe they wouldn't need so much each year. But you know, if they tussle with somebody, we talked about that earlier, if something gets ripped.
Nowadays, clothes, clothing, all that, they can have DVD anymore like they used to do.
That seems pretty low for the entire police department.
Well, it's actually been historically more than enough. Uh, the reason I have it highlighted is the incidentals more than anything.
Well, we have new reserve.
Yeah, it's included in the five. And they get a hundred dollars per year as well.
So basically, I ask buyers on stock. Well, if they only, if he only gets a hundred dollars.
Janitor, no changes to that?
No, not for me.
Janitorial supplies, 800, gas, oil, and diesel, 15,000. Travel and conference, 6,150. Uh, they added, this jumped, doubled over the year before. It was 3,000 this year. We added some more because of some training that was taken. Doubled it to 6,000, left it at 6,000 for this year, and added 150, which includes a I A C P membership. So that's what the extra 150 is for.
So they plan on going to that many schools this year? It's gonna be 6,000 now?
I hope so.
They do.
We've had a former lawyer who was very controversial, but he's made a statement that I think is very true. They don't think more expensive than an overly trained police department is an undertrained police department. You get, you get an arrest that is contested because they weren't doing the right thing, it's gonna cost you a lot more than 6,000 dollars. We need to keep them trained.
Yeah, all of our officers can go through the certification training for the state, but the additional training is what this covers because they don't charge a fee to go through the state certification training at all.
And they're, you know, I'm, I'm only gonna spit this out because we've been reading on it. A lot of, that's why I asked about Tracy. Oh, that travel and stuff? Yeah, I think, I think that's good for us to help with it. It's good for us to help with the fire department, uh, police department. But the thing is, if they have to do these things to keep the requirement in order to be employed, you know, for their particular thing, I think there should be a degree of splitting that myself. And I've looked it up and I have found stuff to actually back, back up my thoughts.
You mean they pay for some of it?
Yeah, because
Yeah, theirs isn't required.
If, I mean, I'm not just pointing out on this one, I'm just saying across the board. Anybody that's gonna go to a schooling that is something that's required to teach them in order for them to be employed for their job that they have, then I think 50/50
Our lifeguards would be the same.
Because the thing is, is if we wanted somebody so bad, that'd be part of the offer of employing them. But they came though as being certified for certain jobs. And if they have to do more continuous schooling in order to keep that job, why is it all of a sudden our responsibility to pay for that?
Because stagnation is dangerous and policing changes over the time.
I, so you didn't hear what I said? I'm not talking about the police department. I'm talking about everybody has to get certified in any job for the city.
Um, I, I'm saying my belief overall about why you really look at this. And if you look at any police incidents that's taken place, I'm just talking about this one because it's up. What they always go to is that, okay, we'll send all of our police to training because they didn't have whatever de-escalation skills or they didn't have careful about discrimination skill, whatever. And then they always go, okay, we'll throw all this money at training. And I feel like if you do it beforehand, and you say we have the best trained officers, then we don't have that problem on the flip side.
If I come to you and I already have my certification, I'm gonna ask you for a moment.
But if you have to keep going to school and being recertified and all that, why is it becoming the city's responsibility?
Because you want to keep a certified person. You don't want, you don't wanna let me go because you've already invested time and whatever in me. And if I'm only gonna be here for six months because you're not going to invest in me, then I will go find a job that, that they will help me keep, keep at the top of my game.
And to clarify, this is not required training to keep their job. This is additional training that we want to offer them for that very reason.
But yeah, why would I want to come work for you with my, with my certification and my degree if you're not going to support me? I'm not going to give you
But I would 50% is what I'm saying.
Oh, no, I want 100%. I want 100% support that I know my employer is behind me and they want me to be the best employee I can be, and I will give you 100%.
Where are we at year-to-date on police department, travel and conference? Because we sent quite a few to training and we've got more planned.
2,039.
How much?
2,039.
10,000 certified.
With as much trouble as we have retaining officers and the turnover and every other police department in this area does not do 50/50. We should not give them a reason to want to not be here.
No, I don't think anybody caught what I was saying.
Well, we've caught it. We just disagree.
I'm not talking about the police department. I was just, that's why I asked about like our engineer and then there's other stuff. Some of that stuff is not required for you for child, but we still pay for it. So we do pay and they go to those things. I'm not really talking about the police department. That wasn't really, it's just something I brought up and I couldn't read about and
Training.
I think you're speaking of travel and conference in general.
Yeah, yeah. I'm not talking about the police department. In fact, if you were another two, I went through a lot of arguments supporting the fire, our fire and police department. So, but that's a
Will this be addressed in our survey? The, the
No, travel and training is not addressed.
No, I just, I started reading and it was interesting. And I could see larger, way larger communities than ours. And they're getting more, very honestly, a guy's been working for you for 35 years. Uh, and he's still, you're spending $6,000 a year per se to send him to all this upkeep. You can get a younger guy that's gonna be there for you for another 35 years. And he's already got the training that you're paying this person to take. And that's the part that I'm reading is that does make sense.
Are we recommending any changes to the travel and conference?
I'm just a question.
Okay, I just want, can I keep going or else we'll be here all night and another night?
The telephone versus the cell phone?
Yes, this is the telephone for their office. And then cellphone is the phones that they carry. And every police officer has a phone. Smartphone for the chief and basic phones for all the officers. The DARE program, fully funded. We can make no cuts there. Machinery is highlighted. We have one new fully equipped Dodge Charger. Uh, they're estimating 46,580 dollars. And I think the mayor was asking Mike, and maybe you've got some input if there's any wiggle room there. Uh, the last Dodge Charger we bought this year was 35,000 dollars. So the rest is to equip the vehicle, equip the vehicle. 7,000 alone goes to the camera system, but that still leaves about 14,000 of lights and logos and cages and
They can't use any of their old equipment?
Uh, not the, not the machine.
They used to.
Well, they
What did you say?
Especially if they're getting to replace the Dodge Charger with a Dodge Charger?
Well, they're not, they're not replacing a Charger with a Charger.
Thank you.
Replacing the
The electronics package is
Absolutely.
Totally different. It's, I, I, I spent a lot of time with Zach. I spent a lot of time with Mike going through. Because the question was, are we trying to turn a Charger into an Escalade? No. And just to give you a little bit of background, as far as are we
I don't think we need a new car this year.
Well, we do.
Isn't the Taurus like done?
Yeah, we were gonna transfer that to the air
The Taurus is not reliable. The, the Charger was chosen over a Durango because the Charger is cheaper. The Charger was chosen over a Taurus because the Dodge products are cheaper than the Ford products. The Dodge products are much cheaper than the Chevrolet products. So the Charger Police Cruiser is really the bargain basement vehicle out there.
So did they price that with the package altogether when they get in here instead of paying extra money to
Yeah, they don't come fully.
They don't
It is a police car, though. It is, that is the police sedan model.
Oh, I know that, but they can come with the radios and the cages and stuff in.
And I think it is more economical to install them than having
I'd like them at different prices themselves.
Factory labor prices versus
And the thing with it is they don't, the prices for the vehicles, they're estimating for the vehicle itself, um There we go, sorry. Sorry, I lost it on my notes. Uh, Mike's estimated about 28,000 on the vehicle because they haven't even, the, the prices haven't even been set for the vehicles. So the radio's about 3,000 dollars, the camera is 5,600, radar's 2,300. Uh, it's 2,000 dollars to install all the bits and pieces. And all the bits and pieces of the light package, the electronics, the console, the cage. Also, by going with a Charger instead of a Durango, it's one cage instead of two. So there are fewer bits and pieces that go into the Charger. So this is the most economical vehicle.
Is that Taurus being used right now?
Yes.
It is being used.
So this is probably not a terribly valid question concerning this, but it seems since oh several years ago, there's a lot of dissatisfaction about getting a black vehicle instead of all the new ones.
We've already, we've, we worked that issue very hard during public safety and we fully support the color and decal package.
Yeah, but nobody in hot springs does. No taxpayer does.
That's fine.
Oh, it's fine for taxpayers that pay for the damn thing?
It is fine because it is a officer safety issue.
I disagree with that.
And we fully support
They told me it's because they can be stealth.
My, my question was from the police department, there's gonna be a lot of dissatisfaction about having a black vehicle because of
No, the police department requested this. They requested this package. And it is primarily for officer safety issues with very good reasoning.
I do
Craig, you may or may not agree with this.
How are you stronger with that?
Change.
Okay, okay.
If it's a safety thing.
So what is up for questioning? Because I don't know if we necessarily need to go into philosophy right now. What's up for
So the, the full price of the Dodge Charger, the fully equipped, and then they need eight new computers. And that 7,500 is 937 dollars and 50 cents a piece. So that's what's up for discussion is the budget amount in that line item. It's a new computer for each one.
And does that allow the Zercher software to operate optimally?
Um, yeah, I don't know if it wouldn't on the old ones. I'm not an IT professional, but it would, it would allow them to operate more efficiently.
Are those laptops?
Yeah, well, no, yes.
Yeah, our laptops were 500 dollars, so they must be more than that if they're pricing them out at 900, maybe 750 each.
If they're desktops, why would they need eight desktops?
One for each officer, so they don't have to share. I don't even know if they have that many offices. I haven't seen the globe either.
Do we have eight officers? Got seven.
Seven, plus Darcy. So there may be some room to cut something there. I don't know if we want to go back to it, leave it, cut it now, discuss it.
So the 54,000 is including the 7,500?
Yep.
Yeah.
So we're down to 3,900 for the vehicle?
It would be 46,580.
46,580 for the new vehicle, yeah.
Any changes? Sound like it?
Can Any without their
Can you confirm that the, the computers are for the vehicles?
No, they're not for the vehicles. They're for the office. The computers are for their office.
I don't understand why they'd need to send off a computer per officer. Because we don't have eight officers on
Seven plus Darcy. No, they're not on all at once. But then they wouldn't have to share.
I asked Mike about, is there the ability to share in with, where each officer does have their own workspace? They've got their own files. They load up their own, you know, their videos. I guess I don't, I don't have a good answer, but it it doesn't seem to work well to share machines. I think their preference would be to have in-car computers to where they could do everything from the car.
So they have eight, they have seven individual cubicles that they work at?
Yeah.
Eight if you count Darcy's.
And then you don't, you know, like Mike's, that stuff definitely didn't want to share with people.
All right, no changes? Oh, in the Zercher software?
Yep.
That we, we are, we are in the midst of getting an agreement drawn up to agree to that this year. There's no way we can cut it next year if we do.
Do we need any discussion about what Zercher is?
I just think it's important to know that the 4,500, if it's not approved for next year's budget, then the council, that the current decision to enter into the Zercher agreement, for me, is dependent on whether that 4,500 is gonna be approved in 2020, because the total package is 9,000 dollars. 4,500 coming out of the 2019 budget, the remaining 4,500 coming out of the 2020 budget. So if this doesn't stay, that impacts the decision to get the software to begin running.
Yeah, it kinda has to stay there.
And how are you gonna pay for it? It's 9,000 this year if the council wants to go with it, or 4,500 this year, 4,500 next year.
And they, the reason we slid at 45, 45 is because Mark, Mark, Mike thought he could absorb 4,500 in his budget this year. And that would help this
Well, maybe there might be four new councilmen next year that
But we are, we are approving this budget.
I know this, but I mean, next year, you say there has to be another 4,500 taken out.
No, it'll
It's this budget.
This is for
Oh, last year had, oh, okay.
And then going forward, it's about 1,100 dollars a year with a potential five-year increase going forward.
And he said, Mike said that there would be the potential for savings on the citations because that software would eliminate the need to purchase those additional citations.
Don't they almost have to have this?
I think they almost do.
The stuff the county's putting in?
Yeah, yeah.
I'd agree with that more than I do with Darcy. I'm just one person.
I'm gonna leave it for now. We, we've got it. We'll get through them and we can go back and talk about that if we need to. Um, this is the support services. We talked about dispatch. This amount has not changed. 55,000 is what we have budgeted. Fire is another one that has not changed. 90,000 is what we have budgeted.
See, I disagree with that, too.
Okay, we can go back to it.
I have nothing that's part of it. I was in there for 30-some years. But the the county part is only giving them 70, 60-some thousand. I think we ought to just match what they give, the district. I, 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 I guess I'd have to see what their bills every Like I say, I was in there for a long time and that sure is a lot of money.
Are they hearing more calls in town than they are out, out of the state?
The numbers may be different. People they're addressing here.
And I mean, we give them a building. It's the city owns that one building.
Yeah, but are they answering more calls in town or
Or, or State, county, state, but they're getting a lot more calls out in town, state, Oldrich. And the little towns of Camp Man and other parts of the state.
So then once again, the county is not coming through with
Sometimes it's true, sometimes it don't.
And when you're talking about the district, that's not necessarily the county. That's a taxing district.
District.
So the county's not doing it. It applies to the taxpayers.
I don't think the county gets fire department anything, do they?
I don't know.
They get all the
Yeah, the district or city?
The property tag, wildfire. It's, there's a fire protection district that funds the fire department outside of the city.
Didn't I just hear somebody say the county gives like 70-some thousand?
No, it's the district.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I mean, we I mean, we, I fought for them last time I was on the council, but we received a ninety. But I, I think we ought to match what the district's doing itself.
Anyone else want to talk about Laura and that?
I, you know, and I don't know if I'm getting into your business wrong. If I am, I apologize. You know, Darcy's.
Sometimes if you want to match that district, either you're ready to come up with two or three hundred thousand rather than.
They're only giving sixty-nine hundred thousand or something.
But there's, there's also in kind, there's equipment, there's trucks, there's, and all that stuff, so.
Yeah, just like the city.
There, there's a, there's a lot that goes, there's some other benefits that come in to a, a well-operated fire department than, you know, like this past couple of weeks, they've been going through their ISO ratings. So, if they maintain their class-five fire department.
I know, everybody's in charge, it's going to be cheaper.
We get our, you know, it, it.
Like I said, I was, I, I know all about that.
And, you know, right now, the ladder truck is nineteen-eighty-four model. It's going to cost them about four thousand dollars to recertify it as a functional piece of apparatus. City One, which is a twelve-hundred-and-fifty gallon pump, is a ninety-five model. Normally ISO, it used to be they wouldn't certify anything older than ten years. I think they upped that to twenty years. Department's up to forty-two people now. And I cannot believe this, but to outfit one firefighter, it's between five and eight thousand dollars for turnout gear.
Okay, you're good.
I, my question was, you get chocolates and a kiss to go along with that. But self-contained breathing apparatus, they're still using the old twenty-two-hundred-and-sixty PSI units. If they ever go to what they should be going to, which is the ultralight, forty-five hundred PSI units, those are eight grand a pop. To buy a new pumper, you only need four-hundred-and-ninety thousand dollars.
They're looking at one at seven-hundred thousand.
And if you, to buy a new ladder truck, in the county, you know, you don't need this for rural operations. They can only need a million dollars for a ladder truck.
You know, I'm not, I'm not disputing that, but we've got to think about what that street's going to cost us in another year. And we're just, you know, I mean, we need to start cutting some places.
No, I, I, I.
I just agree with cutting.
I'm fully aware of that, Craig, I just. The, for, public safety is not, I don't think that's where we ought to be cutting. So, I, I support the.
Okay, like I said, I'm only one.
And that's, I, I appreciate you bringing it up. And that's my opinion, so I'll leave it at that.
Unless there's any other objection, I'm going to leave it at ninety and move on. Development coordinator, should we take a break? I just needed one, I noticed you needed one. Is everyone else ready for a little break?
Yeah, go ahead, yeah.
Okay, take a ten-minute break or five minutes, whatever it takes. I had to take it, and then I noticed you had to take it out, maybe it's time to just give everybody one.
How much do you think it would cost if the city had its own fire department?
I don't want it. I don't want it.
It used to be the city fire department.
Yeah.
So, you just have an ambulance service over there.
I just wonder.
What the fire department's trying to do is get paid firefighters.
Yeah. All they want is you basically put on to the whole time.
And you don't think that's going to cost cities?
Oh, yeah, they know it's going to cost them. This is going to happen, they're just not.
Oh, no, if you guys wanted to cut it, I would really love to hear what Steve has to say.
Yeah, I was telling her.
He's the one that made the recommendation.
Yeah, he started a little bit lower mountain than we said. Can you really get to at an auction for that amount? And we were comfortable in seven-thousand thirty.
He'd get to replacement vehicles for the ones that are listed.
And we were just saying Steve's going to go under that if he can. If he finds something, he will absolutely go under that. So, I'm going to leave it.
And do we, do we?
We have one more on that page.
Oh, we did?
I think that's way too low.
Oh.
No, four, four hundred.
Well, all the street repairs come out of two-on-two. We have a hundred and fifty thousand in street repairs budgeted in the two-on-two fund.
Yeah, but we need to start chip sealing some of our streets. We're going to end up looking like Edgemont before too long.
That's where, I, I believe you, and that's where we have it budgeted, is in the two-on-two fund.
Yeah, but how much is in that?
A hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Well, that's still a good cut. We're talking, I mean, like Albany need, Albany, it's a new street that needs chip seal. All those streets up by, uh, where Lester Hagan's mom and stuff lives, those were all new streets a while back. They should have been chip sealed years ago. They're going to start falling apart if we don't.
We do have a, a list, Tracy has prepared by priority. And obviously, uh, we aren't putting enough money into it to keep completely up, but, uh, we're.
We did submit a grant application just recently for six hundred thousand dollars. These street repairs around our school, we're hopeful that we get that. Our portion of matching for that grant is a hundred and fifty thousand. So, if we get it, great, we can do seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars where the road works for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars extra. If we don't, we have a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for road repairs.
And we're trying to get every street repaired.
How much are those two streets costing, Sid?
Think, was it fifty thousand, Bob? I think is what we had. We got a good, uh, good price. By Tubus has, uh, got their batch planned up, so we got a good price for asphalt this year. We're able to do more than what we anticipated. But it's important we get those done prior to the road construction. And that's why we, we chose, uh, chose that and then also went after that grant.
Is there anything, not to cut you off, is there anything that we haven't done that takes us out of the parameters of our grant being considered?
Uh, well, we met the parameters of the grant, uh, which, which is important, but, uh, not that I'm aware of.
What? Mr. It sounded like you've, you've got some money set aside in the two-on-two. Cause I'm with Craig, even if we don't get the grant up, up on College Hill, we need to have a lot more in our budget to, to do more than just chip seal. I understand chip seal, but we've got roads that need more than chip seal.
I agree.
But if we don't chip seal there, you end up like the roads we need to fix.
Well, you said you had some.
Hundred and fifty.
So, we'll get there, right?
Yep.
Okay, that's fine. I just don't want to lose track of the fact that we need to have serious.
We all agree, we've done forty and fifty thousand in the last two years, so we tripled it for twenty-twenty, because we all agree. That more needs to be done for our roads. We just can't afford to fix them all right now.
Well, I know that.
We want to continue to apply for grants when we have the, the ability to do that.
Well, that one by the school ought to be done by the school and the contractor that tore that street up. That one right in front of the case I tore him.
Oh, that one was fixed by the contractors. There's asphalt there.
Have you drove across it?
I have.
It wasn't fixed, they wanted to put the asphalt down.
Um, this is the snow removal budget. It's tough, it's very tough. This is a crystal ball budget. We put some money in it. We increased it from last year based on what's happening this year. We may or may not have enough in here, but like I said, what we don't pay out of here, we pay from somewhere else. So, um, we did budget for new plow for the four-wheeler, sand and salt. And we like to purchase that in the off-season. And then the brooms and miscellaneous hand tools are very minimal, gas, oil, and diesel. Not very much, not really anything to cut there.
What's wrong with the plow and the four-wheeler?
I'm not sure.
Cause they can put new cutting edges on those.
Yeah, that was a very small budget that they have for.
I know, it's not, new plow is not expensive, but still. I've had mine on my four-wheeler for ten years and I'm still using it.
Uh, sno, uh, street lighting, this, uh, we've contracted out with lighting, a repair, five hundred and thirty dollars and eighty-eight cents a month plus miscellaneous repairs. Uh, these repairs and maintenance would be lighting repairs performed in-house. These would be supplies for the accounts repairs and then our utility costs.
How come some of those new street lights in the bypass aren't working?
Um, they, we've been in contact with the people who put that in. They're still covered under warranty and they're going to come out and fix them. Uh, something with a cut line or something, were you in on those emails?
I didn't, uh, no, I wasn't.
Yeah, they, they've been addressed though. The people who put them in have come out and looked at it and they're going to be repairing it. Street cleaning also is a maintenance-type function. We have salaries and wages for our street cleaner, uh, equipment repairs. They do, um, the broom costs their wear items, so they do need to replace those as they use it. Gas, oil, and diesel. And then this thirty-four-two is year three of our five-year financing, the street sweeper.
So, is that a contract that gets replaced every five years?
Uh, after five years, we have the choice to buy it out or.
Replace it.
And did we cut, we cut some, uh, cut, cut some on the equipment repair?
Yes, we did. Nuisance and complaints goes along with the development coordinator budget. We talked about this. We haven't spent much year-to-date, but we definitely have a lot that we can do. This doesn't go very far when it comes to abating nuisances. It just needs to be done.
One of the things that, uh, through the year I'd like to do is look at changing our ordinance and see if we can go to a fine system, uh, as opposed to the rigmarole that you have to go through to burn them and, uh, cut them and so forth.
Well, isn't this for, like, somebody that don't cut their grass or live there, they can use that to.
Do it.
So, why aren't we doing that?
We're working on it.
Yeah, it's, uh.
I know the city went up there and mowed the boulevard and that one in university, but the yard's still.
Yeah, there's a bunch of them.
We have city employees with the yards up there.
You gotta go, uh, it's cumbersome and I think we need to review the ordinance to see that, see if we can get, and we're working on, on doing that. I agree, cause it's, uh, we've got some.
Well, it's an ISO coming in, that's great.
And we've even got motels that, uh, don't keep their properties up, so.
We've got hotels, businesses on, that are ISOs.
Yeah, and even one down here on River Street in front of the power building is, got weeds, so.
So, we're going to leave that where it's at and move to the airport? So.
We already did the airport.
Did we?
I thought we did, cause we talked about the sixty-six.
We talked about that though when we were talking about revenue.
Revenue, yeah, we know that revenue.
So, I don't think we went through the whole airport budget at that time.
We had wished we.
Yeah, we did that.
Are you sure we did?
Maybe we did. Thirty-seven thousand salaries and wages. Uh, remember we approved the airport manager to be full-time in twenty-eighteen, year-round, year-round full-time.
Why was that?
I disagree with that.
Because it's needed, because it's, our airport has hours, operating hours date to five, Monday through Friday.
So, who's going to monitor your fuel system in the winter?
Well, now, we have a fuel system.
You've got to have.
Yeah, he has plenty to do to keep them busy year-round. It wasn't an issue keeping them busy. And then junk down, insurance. They have two types of insurance. They have the property and liability insurance through SDPAA, and then we have the airport liability policy. So, they have two.
Why do we have porta-potties out there when there's bathrooms in there?
Because they're not always open. So, that gives twenty-four-hour access to people that may fly in to have, use the porta-potty. And the three hundred dollars is what it costs per year, the ninety dollars is a thing to see. And then the other thing we pay for is the, uh, right to pump water out of Angostura, which we don't use, but, uh, it has been said in the past, you don't lose water rights.
That's right.
And then, um, our AWAS system, that's a weather system at the airport, is included in there. Building repairs, he's looking for gutters and downspouts, thirty-three hundred dollars. And then window blinds for a thousand, like forty-three hundred dollars for building repairs in twenty-twenty. Equipment repairs are more blades and repairs. And then we put off the rear tractor tires. He said he could make those, uh, last another year. He has street walk repairs of fifty-five hundred dollars to replace the broken-up sidewalk behind the terminal building. He has two thousand for printer ink, a mailbox, batteries, et cetera. Can you talk, any question?
Mailbox.
Wants to put up a mailbox. I'm sorry, I don't remember where he said it was before.
Just, I had around two thousand dollars worth of printer ink.
Well.
Batteries.
Et cetera. So, all of his supplies, office supplies, it, I don't know in twenty-eighteen with the anomalies. Let me see what he bought for supplies in twenty-eighteen. It may be able to come down a little bit.
Does he currently have a mailbox? He's replacing his mailbox?
I'm not sure, I'm sorry. I can ask him.
Put a slot in the door, that'd be cheap.
Well, and I don't think the two thousand is for the mailbox. It's just something he said to put as a note in there that he wanted.
That wasn't such an anomaly from previous years.
Yeah, twenty-eighteen?
Yeah.
Yeah, let me see what's in here.
And then for two thousand nineteen budgeted, they're four, seven hundred and, seven fifty?
Yeah, cause it's very rare anybody budgets it seven-five bucks, that's for sure.
Oh, his fuel.
And they only spent it three hundred and ninety so far this year.
Yeah.
His fuel tank containment system was purchased in twenty-eighteen. He had to fill some batteries for the super AWAS at four hundred and eighty-five dollars in twenty-eighteen. Got some new filing cabinets in twenty-eighteen, keys.
So, I should be focused more on the et cetera than the.
Yes, weed eater. But there may be a little room to drop that request based on historical purchases.
This is going to be the first full year that he's all-year-round?
Yeah.
And he's just trying to get some.
He wasn't all-year-round last year?
Oh, no, yeah, left, it was in twenty, was it twenty-seventeen budget where we talked about for twenty-eighteen? It was last year too. So, maybe drop that five hundred to fifteen hundred? Gives us a little bit. We talked about this number, it might be higher, but we'll offset that with revenue. This is his oil and windshield washer fluid that he resales.
And actually, the sixty-six thousand may be a little bit lower.
Right, oh, it could be lower too.
Too, lower.
There any idea what his promotion is?
But I think it's, since we don't know, we probably need to keep.
Have no background.
Fuel might be higher by the time you buy it. You never know about fuel.
We charge four dollars and seventy-five cents a gallon. The margin depends on what we buy it for. We don't vary the price based on what we buy it for. We try to set the price and then buy it as soon as we can.
We haven't, but in the past, but it may require that we do. And the way they price that is, uh, based on a survey of what surrounding airports. We try to keep ourselves competitive so that people who use our airports.
This may sound like a stupid question, but is that, is that a special type of lunch here wash?
Oh, I thought you were talking about fuel, sorry.
Oh, it should wash, yeah. Sixty-six thousand, I was working on that. You're not going to have the stuff, you can just buy, you know, at Walmart because you don't want it freezing and as it's blowing off, you don't want to get it on the wings and it freezing up. Icing up is a big issue. So, it, it is a little higher end to it.
It is a good question though, why his margin is on it, what he marks it up. Because I know when he sells the fuel, he only adds fifty or seventy-five cents to it.
Well, I, I was looking at the inventory on resale, the oil, yeah, windshield wash.
Freezing up is an issue around here.
You really don't need a windshield washer like you're right above.
So, that one might be able to go down a little bit. Um, where's that year-to-date, uh, other materials for resale, Caitlin?
Uh, zero?
I see, maybe we could drop that one a little bit. That might be something, he's got some on hand and maybe he could use what he has budgeted this year to store, store up on next year. We could probably drop that down to four hundred, which is closer to what?
Yeah, cause the year before, three, three, two.
And if he's got nine hundred, he hasn't spent it all this year, we get a chance.
We may want to ask on that.
Yeah.
And the reason being, uh.
With the fuel trying?
The fuel purchasing, the, whether the, uh, HSR provided that by.
We did before.
Well, but they may have also had some out by the, the fuel thing. I, I'm not sure. So, you know, let's ask him about that.
Before I drop it or drop it and then ask him?
Then drop it and ask him, but we may have to raise it back up, yeah.
Cause I think that with the nine hundred he has this year.
He's anticipating he's going to have more to sell since he's doing the fuel?
Well, what I did know with the current fuel, the past fuel operator had that capability. And, uh, if he did, then he's planning ahead to, uh, supplement. and if he did, then he's planning ahead to supplement.
I don't think they did, though, because they weren't there.
He didn't see anything on the deal.
There's no way they're just...
Here's another one, janitorial supplies. We have 900, that's more than he spent in the past. Where's he at year-to-date on that?
265.
So, there might be another couple hundred. It's more, it's 300 more than he projected for this year and much more than he's spent.
Than he's ever spent through the year or through the past couple of years.
Yeah. So, do you want me to drop that down to seven, or...
Yeah.
Okay. Minor tools at 200. Agricultural supplies, he does his own weed spraying, 500. Gas, oil, and diesel, 2,500. He has signs for 100, and he's looking at getting a new sign for the fueling system. And then travel and conference, 800. That's to attend the annual airport conference. Telephone, we had to add for a phone line for the new fueling system. Electricity, propane. Other current events are 1,400 to replace the AutoGate ground sensor. He has a quote from overhead doors for 1,300, but it's a 2018 quote, so he's anticipating it would probably be a little bit higher. Improvement other than buildings, 2,600 for runway lighting and concrete pad extensions. And total 158,010, did you see anything else in there to cut?
What's the note new in 2019 on computer software for?
I don't know. How about that?
For the fueling system?
No, because we, yeah, we wouldn't have added that note.
Okay, now, I have one question.
Yep.
But it kinda is not just the overall. On the weed spray, agricultural supplies, are we for weed spraying here in town? I know we're trying to put the cause that everybody's wanting to get back to nature. What is going on as far as weed spray?
We've got a contract with TruGreen for the cemetery, and I think they used that on one of the parks. Billy also has been doing experiment with the natural vinegar soap mix and seeing how that works, and that appears to be working real well. So, we're gonna try to do that. And then we also, the Parks Committee, has a bionic method of...
I'm going to the goat thing now? Is that a certified, is that a certified...
Just don't eat the berries.
But is that, is that a certified flock?
I don't know.
I don't even know what that means.
When you have animals that are gonna be dumping on and in public spaces where humans are gonna be interacting with them, basically, and if they're leaving their little trail, usually you will do that with a certified, so that you know the biologicals that they're leaving behind won't contaminate or be a problem with it.
Sounds like a good question for the Parks Committee.
Yeah.
It would've been nice if somebody would've told me that we were running goats in the public.
The owner needs a farm with all the doggy bag. Pick up after the goats.
Marty may know the answer to that.
You're missing?
The only stretch that the goats are doing right now is the new walk going on to Chautauqua, is that correct?
I don't know. This was a surprise on me when four different people told me about this, and I thought they were joking, because I would've never signed off on something like that.
I thought they was joking too.
When it came to the cemetery, nothing was brought up about them being certified. That was nothing that was told us at the cemetery.
Well, then evidently, somebody did not do their due diligence on that one, because usually that is, especially when they're gonna be reacting, and the thing is, if you're gonna allow the goats to...
I mean, you're...
Whatever animal, leave their biologicals on the grass, then where is the problem with the dogs? Because I've already been asked that question.
And as far as the cemetery, we told them no, so I can't speak to Parks.
I thought it was a joke, I really did.
Can you and the Parks Committee check with our goat herder?
Last year, 2019.
Who is it?
I don't know who's goat herder. I can, and that's what I was like, you're...
Nobody actually answers those questions.
Stern Oil?
David, May Winters has heavy...
They've just bought that Humongous Tane. They come down here all the time.
Here, I'll add it to my list for this.
I've seen these before for three years.
That's what's left behind.
Stern Oil?
I really don't know what's going on.
Somewhere, yeah. I can get their phone number.
Nobody really knows anything.
I'll add it to my list, these are the same problem every year.
Nolan had some stuff, Jim had some stuff.
Last three years.
Marty had the last of the good stuff.
Oh, 15 a gallon. So, you know the city's gonna get better deals now.
Came and know it, just SOL or nothing.
Never aware of any discussion with that.
It was comfortable with that thing? And the only reason I ask is because that seems a little...
Yeah, he's not spraying outside the wildlife fence.
The reason I was bringing up the weed spray is, are we doing it as a community-wide program?
Is he spraying the whole property or just...
Spray the vinegar and...
Is he spraying the whole property or just where the...
Again, I don't know the details.
Because the whole property, I mean, enough barrow property. What is there...
Because we were saying, I'm gonna be honest, it does work as a patrol, as a patrolway agent, doing it that way.
When I was on county at four, we had a plane...
Like a lot of the cracks and stuff that went down for that.
Yeah, we're not spraying outside anymore.
That's why I'm asking, are we mixing it and using it as a whole?
We're not farmers. Okay, so are we ready to go into the cemeteries?
Get a proper shut up.
I went back to street.
Because I told Billy if you want to talk to me, I held a federal license for 16 years.
Yeah, wow, yeah.
All right, we are now at cemeteries. 2020 projected salaries and wages, 40. Payroll taxes, 3,000. 2,100 retirement, 1,200 workers' comp, 10,500 for group insurance, 300 unemployment, 875 insurance. Professional services, she requested an increase this year. She only had budgeted 700, but our old city administrator told her to go ahead and sign a contract for $3,100 for weed spraying. She liked it, it worked out good. She'd like to continue to have that kind of service. So, we have it at $3,500. We will have to address in a future appropriation how we pay for the approved over expenditure of the budgeted amount for 2019. 500 for vehicle repairs, 1,000 for equipment repairs, 700 for street walk repairs, 600 for sewer water repairs, and that's just general repairs. She has an irrigation system that she has to work on.
There's not sewer up there, though.
200, yeah, so it's just water repairs for her irrigation system. $200 for fence tools, $90 for supplies, 75 for janitorial supplies, 200 for minor tools, 150 for grass seed, 1,500 for gas, oil, and diesel, 100 for signs, 600 for electricity, 67,000.
What kind of janitorial supplies they need out there?
I can look and see what she's purchased in the past, not very much. Where's she at year-to-date?
All the guys, the storage.
$21.57. Yeah, she doesn't spend much, and we could probably drop it a little, but we're not gonna save a lot by doing that.
Well, no, I'm just curious.
This is just Lori, right?
Yeah.
So, Lori signed a contract, is that with the board on the weed control?
No, she did not. The city administrator did, and it was for TruGreen.
TruGreen.
42640.
That's something too...
That weighs the top, that's just Lori, and that ain't for part-time help.
That is for part-time help as well.
Okay.
Were there other quotes with that, do you know, George?
I don't know.
I don't either, I'm sorry.
TruGreen around here is a little bit cheaper than...
Has she had part-time help in the past?
Cost me hundreds of dollars.
TruGreen, and then there's...
I got Tom Hucked to charge me $70 a year. My lawn looks better than TruGreen is doing it.
Here's what we purchased with supplies, bug spray, rubber gloves, trash bags, hornet spray, paintbrushes, and sandpaper, wasp killer, plastic buckets, those kind of things.
Oh, just wasp killer alone she'll run.
Right. All right, any other questions on this one? It's pretty simple, the only thing really you have for discussion is the weed spraying. It worked really good, she said it looks beautiful there.
The only reason I'm questioning that, because if we're gonna go try to go community-wide, going more natural, a less invasive product...
This is also a treatment?
Yeah.
I can remember what the bill says, it's not just weed spraying, it's also a fertilizer...
Yeah, it's everything. With those companies, it's pretty much everything, unless there's a particular problem, then they add it right into the spray.
Problem is, if you don't water a lot, if you spray like that, you'll end up burning the grass, don't look very good.
That's why it's like a chemical site, so you back it off.
Transit, it's Prairie Hills Transit. We added this department to the general fund, and we have $5,000 going to Prairie Hills Transit. Any conversation or discussion on that?
Why so much?
Well, they asked for 35,000.
From the backseat.
So, we dropped it down.
I think 2,000 would be too much.
Anybody else wanna change that, or should we leave it at 5?
Yeah, 2,500 and give 2,500 more to deliver.
Yeah, we don't have extra, though, remember? Any that we cut, we were making a decision, we're not giving it somewhere.
I think 2,500 last year.
I think 2,500 was a good message.
Well, I'm gonna be honest, I, there's, in the past, when we first got into this, they came to us, we were, I was there, and their, their business sense just didn't make any sense to me personally, but they were very arrogant about when we would ask questions and offered any help. They pretty much told us that they knew what they were doing, and I remember the comment, was government traditionally is not a good business operator, which in some sense I have to agree. But at the same time, then why the hell are you here asking me for money? That was my opinion.
The, you know, just from past experience, you as a council would have to be prepared to receive the phone calls from the people that need the transportation. We got around it last year with the 5,000, I thought that was a pretty fair amount. I think if we agree as a city that that's something that we should help provide public transportation, that's a function that many cities take on, and, but I also have the same feeling that you do, that we aren't completely, we are not completely honest with, I said that at the last meeting, and that's why we dropped the 25,000 matching fund for the site, because we offered them a site and could've taken that match out of the site that we offered to give them. They chose to build, take a building, take it off our tax rolls.
And that is one of the main reasons, other than my personal experience from the past with them, as far as I know, it could be all management's been changed and everything. But anyway, asking us to pay, give money to actually lose more money, just doesn't make any sense as far as the citizens.
I'm willing to take a phone call and tell them they got 1.8 million dollars in their account. Why do they need more money from us?
Basically, I would make that statement to absolutely know what money they do have, but...
We have not seen their financials this year, unless they have, last year it was 1.8 million dollars.
But this is not, and let's be honest, this is not a year to be asking us for that kind of money, where we have all, tonight have had discussions on what real things we need to spend money on, and we got it there.
We're cutting hundreds of dollars, you know, that's the best we can come up with, and we're...
For the next three or four years, I don't think it's a good time to ask the city for money, because we have these streets and sewer and water have to go in, Main Street.
We're gonna have to do a few things for some of the stuff that we're cutting, and ask the community, hey, step up with us. For what it's worth, I think this is something that you're gonna probably come back to when you find that you're gonna still have a lot more to cut.
I think 2,500 is most I'd be willing to pay.
I mean, honestly, I have no problem for the service that they're providing, okay? I like what that said. But to ask us to fund them, to take something off the tax bill, is, that is stupid.
I have copies of the value and the taxes, they want to see it. I did bring the copies.
Yeah. What is it, can you just rattle that out first?
The current taxes they pay a year for Rick's building is around 6,000, and for 2019, it's valued at 313,530. They bring about 6,000 a year, and I think maybe about 17 or 1900 that goes to the city after county and schools.
So, really, over a 10-year thing, that, I mean, we're really taking it in the shorts, let's be honest with you.
So, we take 1900 dollars off that, why do they take that off there?
And plus a potential sales tax out of business.
Yeah.
Good possibility.
I mean, we've already seen the impact of taking the plunge off, and, you know, and that's, you know, I'm not backpedaling or nothing, it's a done deal, we're there, okay? Let's deal with it. But what I'm saying is, we have seen that impact already. So, I'm not at all for that.
Any other requests to change this amount?
I would say 2,500, if somebody wants to wait.
Okay, that's 2,500. Bob, Ron?
I can make up tomorrow.
Right? 2,500?
I agree, 2,500.
Bill?
We got us all the time, every hour thinking about it, whatever the moment might be.
Some things better than nothing.
If the city has abandoned this thing, we just don't like their business practices.
Well, and really, even if we did like their business practices, our budget doesn't allow us to...
Our budget right now does not allow us to be doing this.
Yeah. So, 2,500 it is? Rabies and animal control, I'd like to get through the general fund tonight before we quit.
I could fill your in.
This is our ACO, we have 30,000, 2,300, 1,800. He does not currently use, does not participate in city insurance, even though he could. So, that's only 40, that's his life insurance. Unemployment, 200, 550 for insurance. 6,500, we bumped this up. Animal boarding is 300 a month, plus the cost of the daily warden and disposition of animals that are not picked up. Year-to-date, I think that's how we came up with this higher number, is that we've just had much more, and this was an anomaly, this was the dog, if anybody remembers, it was around with the dog. But we have been pushing up around that 55, so we, year-to-date, had a higher amount, budgeted 6,500 for next year.
Later on this year, can we visit some of the charges and stuff like that, if everybody's in agreement?
I think that's something that public safety has been tracking, and trying to, we're trying to come up with a better way of lowering that, so good point.
Minor tools, gas, oil, and diesel, cell phone, there's not a lot there to cut. Recreation.
Can, I wanna, can anybody tell me why the city went from being a contract employee to a full-time employee?
Because we direct him, and we were advised by legal and our auditors that he is an employee. We provide his car, we provide his equipment, we direct his activities. We were not in compliance with the law by doing all those things and saying it was a contract employee. We had that same conversation, we tried to make the part-time library contract employee, it didn't work. Recreation, I want to remind you that council approved this program to run year-round in 2019, so you don't see a significant increase in this budget, but now we're allowing it to run year-round. 2,200 for salaries and wages, she asked me to put an extra 1,000 on there.
2,200, 22,000.
I'm sorry, 22,000. She wasn't sure she needed it, so that's why it's highlighted, we could probably drop 1,000 off there.
Why did she want an extra 1,000?
Just because she's been approved to run year-round, and she doesn't really have a whole year of experience yet of what that'll be. She has not historically used that much, she just thought it'd be helpful to have an extra 1,000 in there, but that's why it's highlighted.
Why did we start having recreation year-round?
She requested it, and the city administrator requested it?
What does that mean?
Well, it was, there's been a...
Swimming lessons?
Request to, by adults to use Mueller Center, and for pickleball, basketball haven't opened, and the gym that has never been used at night is now being used a couple nights a week and providing opportunity. And the gym that has never been used at night is now being used a couple nights a week and providing opportunities for-
Does she go down there and watch people?
She does.
And she goes down and signs people.
That's what I'm asking.
Well, and also, her hours were running like from May to something, well, what she was finding is, to get ready for the May, she was actually starting her hours in sometimes March and April, and was just kinda gimme hours. So, we, was it at admin finance that we had the discussion that said, okay, you know, that's not proper that you're working and not getting paid? So let's just drop the summer off, the summer recreation, and call it a recreation director, and if you're gonna work, you oughta get paid, and-
And we wanted recreation hours outside of the summer months at for adults, and if that can happen in the winter, pickleball, the basketball, the kinds of things.
And a lot of folks do go down there in the wintertime just to watch.
I'm sad, I just wanted to know.
Our community asset was, was showing interest in it, she tried to meet that need.
Yeah.
All right, so, I dropped that by a thousand, we're trying to make up some money, and there was a trust board, it looks like we can. I don't know that that'll have a big impact, it's only a thousand on our payroll taxes, so I'd like to leave that the same, workman's comp, unemployment. Professional services, this is umpires for baseball, and the shattered baseball league fees are three hundred dollars a team. Publishing, a hundred dollars, supplies and material, two thousand, that's for all activities. Uh, traveling and conferences, the annual, red cross, a registration fee of three hundred, and then transfers out is the transfer for the five oh one baseball, T-ball improvements. It didn't quite come to this much this year, I think we were at twenty-six hundred, um, so we could probably drop that down to at least three thousand. Everybody's okay with that?
Um, at the publishing?
Yep.
Is, is that a hundred this year?
Yes.
But I'm seeing maybe paid six hundred-ish.
Yeah, that also was the city administrator, publishing, um, job hiring postings and charging her, and she wasn't happy with that. She said she gets most of her workers from word of mouth at the school, she didn't need it, it was already done though.
So we won't see it again?
Nope, we won't, she didn't like it, she said she got no benefit out of it, she didn't want it, and she won't see it again.
What's her name?
Kathy Wren. Senior citizens, this covers the seniors center, three thousand dollars, and then, uh, it was four thousand for senior males. It was five thousand for senior males, but they decreased it by a thousand.
Oh, so it's a thousand?
Yeah, their prep costs have gone up, but they said that they could lower their amount by a thousand. All right, now we're at parks. Sixty-five hundred, salaries and wages, payroll taxes, retirement, workers' comp, group insurance, unemployment, insurance. Professional services, weed spraying, the parks and green spaces, we have a thousand. Vehicle repairs, fifteen hundred. Building repairs, fifteen hundred, they didn't have any specific repairs.
Why is they getting there off to the street shop?
Uh, they have storage buildings and the park buildings, bathrooms.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Equipment repairs, five thousand. This is where the extra fifteen hundred for the centennial park improvements are, to remove the rocks and replace them. Sewer water repairs of two thousand. If anybody sees anything they wanna stop talking about, let me know, Ben?
I, not to beat a dead horse, but on the eight thousand for the weed spraying, is that a contract with anybody, or?
Yes, they would have met, that would be true green again, for, and they've determined where that best got spent. But they still do the in-house stuff where they can as well, but that's weed and feed. Uh, people get really bent out of shape if there's dandelions in the park.
Yeah, but at the same time, they, you hear them complain every year about, oh, you guys are using chemicals, and you kids are in there.
Uh-huh. Sewer water repairs, two thousand. Fence tools, five hundred. Clothing, six hundred. Janitorial supplies, two thousand. Minor tools, fifteen hundred. Any of these where you're looking at the year-to-date amounts and?
Clothing, why is it so little? I'm, I'm not-
Uh, they don't, they don't get boot reimbursement, they just get the bright colored shirts, they don't put logos on them or anything, they-
It's not a requirement for them to have steel toe boots?
No.
Then, they don't have city hot springs or park squirt on the shirt?
They stopped putting those logos on there, because they go through the shirts so fast.
Hey, it's a listen on your shirt.
Yeah?
Yeah. Agricultural supplies would be trees, grass seed, they're planning to reseed the soccer and baseball fields next year. Twenty-eight hundred for gas, oil and diesel, two hundred for signs, eight thousand for electricity. They have to replace, they have a request to replace the chain link fence around one softball field at Butler Park that is thirty-plus years old.
And it does need it.
Twenty thousand dollars there, and then this is where they decreased their request in machinery, instead of trading out two John Deere mowers. They, um, will get one this year and one next year.
How many softball games are played above the park? They didn't even have teams last year, did they?
They played every Sunday, but I'm not sure when it started, they just had a tournament this past Sunday, it was the last one.
How many softball fields are there? It used to be three.
As far as the adult leagues, I guess, Adam, or Brett, Brett, so, the adult league, it's on Sundays.
Can I ask? Uh, not on, nursery and stuff, uh, what, ten years ago, I started a nursery with Billy, and at that time with Gene Weiser and stuff. Whatever happened with any of that, I guess that made it keep going, or?
Those trees and stuff, uh, valid?
We spent, we spent six hundred dollars on starting a nursery. And was, as we used those trees, we would replant, and until they found a good spot, had the merf that wasn't acidic to have our own nursery, so we would get out of that purchase.
Yeah, I, I-
Never was kept up, I mean, I know, even I-
Yeah, I hadn't even heard of a nursery before.
I haven't heard about it, and, and I have to track down it, I think in the past, it gave grants.
And you turn, go towards the gate, look off the left, there's a drop, there's trees all the way down.
And we would take, we would get whips and stuff like that, implant those, and, but instead of paying an outrageous price for a four-year-old tree, we would owe our own for-
I know, I, these shirts can cost twenty thousand dollars for them.
No, they're not, they haven't gotten a bid yet.
Does the whole thing need replaced, or just parts of it?
All, the fence, all the way around that one softball field needs replaced.
Yeah, the one, the one, we, we were using.
Yeah, and there's, Tracy gave him the name of the fencing group that did the work around the water, um-
Field station?
No, the-
Hold that.
Yeah, and so he thought that might be a little bit high, um, but they didn't have estimates yet, that was a, yes. M and M fencing, was it?
I don't remember.
I think it was called M and M fencing.
Upper Rapid?
Lot of times, if a, a major construction job is going on, they rent the fence from a fencing company. And if the project usually lasts longer than a year, rather than to put that back into their stock, they'll sell it as used. And there is some pretty good selling projects going on around the city right now, so we could talk to them, see what they have.
Yeah, they're out of Rapid City, M and M fencing.
Well, if they priced it through the landfill.
Sixty, almost.
And a lot of times you can trade-
They're saying, try to shop low.
Other companies, I haven't seen, it's gonna be a little more expensive.
Yeah, they will shop it too, they will shop it, it will get cold. So, do we wanna leave that at twenty, do we wanna change it to eighteen or fifteen, or?
How much do we need to cut still?
Just take it to fifteen.
Okay. We're almost there, we'll see where we're at. Libraries, we already went through, that's the good news. Um, this is the Mueller Center budget, he is requesting to increase part-time hours by a hundred and ten hours. We talked about how recreation is now year-round, and the gym's being used at the nighttime, well, that increases the salaries and wages needed at the Mueller Center for someone to be there. It is a twelve hundred dollar increase for that.
I thought that one lady was there.
Well, she is, but she doesn't run the Mueller Center, she doesn't have keys for the Mueller Center, she doesn't play bathrooms.
So Amy and Carl, they're-
Yep. Most of these, if any questions stop me, professional services are at five thousand, okay, easy, aren't they? So that happens after it gets too late. Warren Chemical, True Green, Ecolab, Alsko-
That's the other one, it's local, Bob, that's what you're asking.
Bot Wranglers.
One.
Uh, publishing is the South Dakota Magazine and Facebook Publishing, where's he at, year-to-date on his publishing?
Two sixty-five.
Yeah, I think that might be a little high, uh, it looks like though in years past, he's used about that much. I don't know if that was city administrator, maybe he's not getting as much publishing done.
Yeah.
Um, rentals would include a scissor lift for changing the lights, and this was discussed at the department head meeting, and somebody said, hey, we have one. And he said, nope, that's my old one, I'm not using it, I wanna rent one.
Would it be cheaper to buy one, if everybody's renting them so much?
These groups were needing a lift?
Don't we have two? Two at Vassport, and it's eight hundred dollars, and I imagine buying one's gonna be more than that.
Well, yeah, but they, they, eight hundred dollars a year, those things don't wear out in a year, I mean, I don't know.
He's spending it consistently either, so, uh, here's highlighted, building repairs, we talked about, um, replacing the north roof theater at sixty-nine thousand. I don't know if Scott got the chance to take a look at that.
I didn't get a chance to talk with him today.
Chris did submit a bill today from Weathercraft for doing repairs on both the south and the north roof, like patch repairs, and it was thirteen hundred. So I don't know if those repairs can get us by for a few years, or if this is absolutely required. But his original request included replacing the north roof theater, and these are estimates from Weathercraft, and the south roof over the gymnasium. But he did identify that the, the more important one is the theater roof at sixty-nine thousand, so he took out the forty-one.
But there's been no specific leaks identified, he just said that there was some discoloration on some of the ceiling tiles. Now, is that from a leak, or is that from condensation?
And did the repair that Weathercraft just did, will that get us by for a while?
When was the last time the roof was done on that?
Oh, it's twenty, it's more than twenty years old.
Yeah.
So what, lately, like, what, two years ago, they were doing repairs?
That was in the middle, we did fifty thousand dollars on the roof in the middle section, so these are on the two sides.
When you're middle, it's still leaking.
So I mean, the, the glass roof that was above the fountain?
No, it's still there.
Call it, the middle, the glass.
That used to leak really bad.
Yeah.
Still address that?
Exactly. When we get to our, um, you know, amount we need to make up, this may be something that comes up, and it may, especially since it looks like we're gonna have a third meeting, it may be something we, we can get Scott's feedback on, and maybe Weathercraft's, and see if, if that's something that can be dropped. Equipment repairs, those are HVAC repairs, new batteries for the scrubber are gonna be a thousand dollars. Fifteen hundred dollars for parking lot repairs, eight hundred dollars for supplies, seventy dollars for polos. Four thousand dollars for janitorial supplies, thousand for minor tools, two hundred for grass seed and irrigation supplies. One hundred for gas, oil and diesel, that's for his mowers. He has a hundred for signs, he's looking at getting some no-smoking signs. Utilities are all paid from the two-one-one fund. He is looking to purchase fifteen new banquet tables, he does this every year, so that he doesn't have the expense of all new tables at once, so he rotates them out. I is looking to replace a vacuum in 2020, so that's his total budget. And this one has sixty-nine thousand for a new roof in it, so that, we would change that to four, if we decided that the roof didn't need replaced.
And it just says a comment on the grass seed and irrigation supplies and stuff like that, we really need to have a serious conversation. Every department has to do with anything with outside, we should just put all that together and bump that stuff.
Uh, bolt.
And we can bump it, we got, got the area, we got the equipment to do it, and instead of every department just buying a little bit here, a little bit there, just put it all together, we could buy it cheaper out of volume.
We still would have to break it up, the class by the department, but-
Good, good point.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, well, it'll, in the long run, be a lot cheaper for us.
So I'm gonna go ahead and leave that highlighted, and I'll make that note, Chamber, yeah, well, George did ask Scott already to check it out, so we'll see. Here's another good one, you can start discussing, Chetco, ten thousand, they requested- Twenty-five, yep.
My honest opinion is, you know, now that I know a little bit more about the Chetco, because my honest opinion was, the way I understood it, Chetco and Chamber were all at one thing, and then they split them apart, but now they're, you know, it's basically come down to, we split them apart, they were sharing the same money before, per se. Then they split them apart, so now we need to come up with some kind of a budget to help Chetco. That's why I brought up, why we give, you know, here's eighty percent, do we have to give the eighty percent all to the Chamber? My honest opinion from some of the business people, it's come to them, thought Chetco did a good deal, and then everybody just knows about the Bomb Guards, they worked on that.
Chetco had been kind of in that category of Black Hills vision for several years, because you weren't seeing any return. Well, you know, now, now they're starting to, to show a little proof.
But the problem being is, like I just said, you had a hole, and that was the pot of money. Now they split them in half, or however you wanna look at it, but, so now we're supposed to come up with another pot of money for a different thing. I just, at this point in time, the way our budget is, it's really, if, you know, I'm not, not downing the Chamber, I'm just saying. At one time, they did share the money, um, somehow or another, that did work. How many dollars were exactly given towards the Chetco work that they do, I don't know.
Well, just to tell you, the Chamber, when it was together, the money that was collected by the Triple B could not be used for economic development. I had to take a very, uh, do, make sure that the Chamber raised enough money to cover the economic development expenses that, that were not taken in by the Triple B money. Triple B money is governed by South Dakota Quotient law, it's collected by people that serve our tourism industry and locals with restaurants, drinks and motel rooms. And so it's a, it's collected to promote the cities, to help those businesses collect and provide, at promotion, where economic development doesn't have a, uh, that get, get, get a chance at having that, that balance.
So how do we rectify that? How, how do we vote out?
And so Chetco has had to raise their money through memberships, uh, part of it is the partnership with the city. Many cities, uh, particularly in the eastern part of the state, that don't have a tourism industry, put a lot more into economic development organizations, because they're trying to get that, uh, small business to come in, like machine shop or whatever, to come in. And that's what we're trying to do, do here. Uh, they've done a, an excellent job of, with Bomb Guards, that's something that they've shown some proof, which they haven't been in the past, but economic development's a very, very difficult, uh, job, because it's a constant improvement. You've gotta have a partnership with your Chamber, the existing businesses, you've gotta have a partnership with, uh, the city. That the city is business friendly, you read the article from Lead, uh, there's a, just because of what happened with the sidewalk, there's an attitude that people have, that the city of Lead is not, uh, helping, so that's why, uh, they're blaming the empty storefronts. So, uh, it's a three-legged stool that has got to be somewhat equal.
So how, can, how do we? Can you tell me what kind of wages that this?
So, you gonna apply to your financial statement, Chetco?
Yeah, because she came and talked to us.
She came and-
What, what, how much, what is the tax thing on, uh, the property up there, the old shop?
They're valued about a million or so right now, and I would say, it's got, I mean, the tens of thousands, they pay quite a hefty tax bill.
Do you?
But I can't see cutting anything. But I can't see cutting anything to Shedco.
No, I, I know that.
Right, I'm not, I'm not suggesting you are, but as far as, there are so many communities that pay so, so, so much more than what we pay to have a Shedco-type economic development here. And I don't want to see us in the position where we... There's a cer, a statistical figure, I can't remember what Andrew said, how much per citizen you're supposed to have paid for economic development to be functioning. And I never want to see us in the position where Edmont, they give ten thousand to Shedco, and we at minimum should be giving ten thousand to Shedco. Because Edmont sees the value in, they're in a place where they are hurting and they need economic development, so they're willing to shell out more. And I feel like, I wish we could give them more because they do so much for this community. And economic development is more of a long-term thing. You're not gonna see results right away or, you know, overnight. But bringing like young people to this town, they have partnered with like, you know, work with Build a Code of Scholarship with the employers who have the hospital. If you get Build a Code of Scholarship, the business is helping sponsors, so when they come back with their nursing degree, they have to work for the hospital for three years. So it brings young people into town, and we know they're always hiring for nursing. And that's something Shedco has helped to do, is to bring people here and keep them here. And with Bombards and everything, there's so much value to them.
Oh, no, I agree with you a hundred percent. I'm, my thing is I think they're worth more than the ten thousand, and I don't want them to feel like we don't appreciate and don't want them to dissolve any interest in our area, so...
It's, you know, uh, yeah, by, the other thing that they have helped us with, and they're working very hard. They haven't seen any fruit on it, is workforce housing. They've identified a parcel of land and working with a developer to try to get that down. A lot of things that they do, we can't make public until, you know, until it happens.
There's a lot of things they've worked many years on before it even shows any type of...
And, uh, they help us as a city directly look for grants and...
They've written a few ones.
And they have, uh, were able to give a grant to, uh, to do the environmental study up at the lots on Garden Street. So we didn't have to shell out several thousand dollars for, for that, so they, in a sense, have seen this.
The old water felsing.
So you, you figure, what was the, what was the tax on, on who were putting the water on here? On the plunge? You, you kind of just picked that out. I mean, so they should be...
Not on the plunge.
What was it?
Shopco?
Shopco.
I could look it up if you want. Give me a second. I have the data on my phone.
Oh, my goodness.
It's good to have somebody young with technology.
Yeah.
Are we comfortable leaving it at ten then? Is that kinda what I hear?
I am. I just, you know, unfortunately, we can do better, but...
It's twice what we gave them last year.
Yeah, no, I understand.
We are supporting the Chamber at this tune here, so to say I wish we could give more and other communities give more, we're sharing this wealth that we give here, so it's not like we're not giving anything towards it, not all communities on their tier or not.
I was just kinda wondering what, what the Shopco profit pays in taxes is, is, uh, you know. So we could recognize, you know, they're bringing this, they, they brought this much tax money in the first year for us. You know, we appreciate that, but at this point, I guess, it does seem...
I'm gonna leave it at ten then while Caitlin's looking that up. And then the transfers out is just, we're not using it this year as the money we transferred out to set aside and save for the road reconstruction in twenty nineteen.
And Misty, if, uh, if for some reason we decide not to do the Mueller Center roof, we might have a little bit more that we could put into some other place.
Into contingency or legal, I would vote for, but, yeah. And so our deficit right now, after we went through all those, is sixty-one thousand nine hundred ninety-five. The Mueller Center roof being sixty-nine thousand. If we could get by a few years without replacing that, which I'm not saying we should. I think we should get the advice of those that would know.
If we end up pulling that, I think we ought to put that extra money back into the meals for elderly.
We had it, put another thousand there?
I mean, we're giving ten thousand dollars to Shedco to do things for town, and we're cutting people, old elderly that need food and stuff.
But if we kick it down, you know, we're just hurting ourselves.
I think too, making money costs the best money.
I haven't seen anything coming out of, yeah, just a few things. I mean, granted, they're a good company. They do, do well. So does, uh, so does transit too, but not enough, you know, to meet my expectations.
So raise vote if you missed it. Let's drop it to five.
Uh, for reference, Shopco for twenty nineteen, their tax is worth thirty-five thousand four sixty-five. So rather than it sitting empty, we are having someone move in, which it might have set up for how long without Shedco?
I don't think.
And also, I was like, you know, what kind of wages ain't they? We have a workforce housing program going here, and, uh, any, any company that comes in and not pay a decent wage, can't afford to move in.
So we got two voting for five thousand. Any more?
To your question, Craig, about, uh, the senior meals program, seniors in the Boys and Girls Club are near and dear to my heart. Seniors, one, Boys and Girls Club, two. So I talked to Greg Faust and asked him, uh, reducing, uh, his request by a thousand dollars, does that mean someone's gonna go without a meal? And he said absolutely not. Uh, they've seen that there isn't, hasn't much demand in the program right now. So he's completely comfortable with reducing by a thousand dollars. Nobody's gonna go without any food by doing that.
And he guarantees that?
Well, there's no guarantees. But he's very confident from what he knows of the program. He's been working with it for a long time. And he said that they've, there just isn't the demand on it that there has been. And if they need more, they can come back to us and say, hey. But that, that was the only question that I asked of anybody outside, uh, about the, the changes. And he's very, very confident.
That was the impression I got, too, or I wouldn't even recommend it.
Yeah.
That, that Shopco real estate, uh, or tax income, that goes on whether that building's occupied or not, right?
Yes.
That is true.
So all we're gonna be looking at is the sales tax.
But the sales tax is the vital thing and the fact that we're getting a viable business.
Although, to point out there, Rick's Auto Building that has the six thousand tax bill hasn't been paid this year. It's sitting empty.
Where's that?
The Rick's Autos Bill, I think, that has a six thousand? There hasn't been paid this year. Just 'cause it's owned does not mean it's guaranteed.
Ten rires.
I'll, I'll bet you that it's paid, 'cause I don't think they'd wanna lose that on taxes. But to your answer of Shopco, I guarantee you, Carl O'Blenner and Mike Orton owns that building. And it wouldn't have said it'd be very long, 'cause they couldn't afford it.
No, the taxes.
Alright, so I'm gonna leave Shedco, Tim, 'cause it sounded like just two people were interested more.
Let everybody think about it. We still got more to...
Nope, that's it. That's it for the general fund for tonight, if we're gonna stop there. And that's our deficit.
How many more do we have?
Uh, we would, leftover for tonight, we have the two-one, or for another night, we have the two-one-two fund, which has a very large deficit, but the majority of that is four hundred and fifty thousand for the bridge. If it doesn't get done this year, which is money that would save this year and have to be reapplied next year. Uh, we have not put any money in for these two anywhere.
Question.
Yep.
What ever happened to our parks plan? That money is supposed to be put into that every year.
I, there was never a vote to put money into a parks plan.
There was once on the council.
I don't, must be something that...
That's why we paid thousands of dollars to have a parks plan.
I'm sorry. So then we have Evan's plunge and the golf course. They have two departments. We've gone through solid waste. Water and wastewater, and then, so, we wanna trudge ahead?
I'm gonna go with him.
Okay.
I think that's something we need to discuss, is that Parks Plan gives back on, on course of that.
Sounds like you could...
What's the Parks Committee conversation?
It used to be hanging on the wall. Is it back there?
Uh, it's available, I think, on our website, and there is a copy back here, but I don't know if it's still the administrator's copy.
Like this, gonna put that big soccer field up at Butler Park? Use the one down at Mueller Center for parking.
Go actually look here. There was still sixty-one thousand.
Yep.
Sixty-four.
Yeah, pretty much.
Are we gonna keep going or do it a different night?
Uh, Vegas suicide.
We still need some additional information from the Mueller Center roof, but we can trudge ahead or we can...
Well, we gotta, I gotta go work early in the morning, so you guys can carry on about it.
I think we ought to do it another night.
We're gonna need that anyway, still.
We should have all the councilmen.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it won't take as long because we have the Evan's plunge, the two departments in the golf course and the two-one-two fund.
I don't know, it's past Bob's bit, I know.
Well, I do apologize if anybody thinks I...
No, we appreciate your open feedback. I think I say for all of us that we want to hear forever.
Somebody can hear longer than I have on this go-around, so I have to ask questions.
Yeah, don't apologize.
So this is important. That's why we have this, and, uh, it's important that you understand, uh, the background for each of the dollars, 'cause you're the ones who are gonna get the calls, why can't we do this?
Oh, I already got calls. If people are considering stuff inside, they're considering nothing until we tell the public.
So, thank you for all the discussion, and thank you, Misty, for all the...
Yes, you're doing well, Misty.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Trying. It's never easy when you're trying to balance a budget.
And I thank George and his wife for my dinner.